At ten o'clock schedule, we messed up every now and then. Uh, welcome to the Fayette County Commission meeting for um August the twenty-fifth. Um, Tom, you want to lead us in congratulations?
To the flag, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now, we have changed our agenda to look for support request first between nine and nine oh five or nine ten. So we have a request of support from Diane Carlson and Carrie Shrunk, uh, Family Resource Network, regarding a grant for funding to place social workers in Fayette County schools. Are either one here or on?
Yes, I'm Diane.
Okay, sorry. I thought that's who you was, but I wasn't for sure.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so, yes, uh, even though the actual agenda item says, um, school social workers, um, we have changed that slightly. Um, it was actually the notice that you saw from the juvenile justice and adequacy program. We first saw the opportunity, we were drawn to the prevention resource officer. That was a program area, um, in the direction we would hopefully like to go in. We had hiring concerns with the two schools that the Board of Education identified as PROs.
Which are they?
Um, it is Fayetteville, three K through eight, and Sharon. But we have since learned, after speaking with Fayetteville police yesterday, they do have a law enforcement officer. If he willing to just get the additional PRO training and then transition over. Uh, I have a call with Smithers Police Department this afternoon to see if they, maybe see what their situation. Cause we were concerned about hiring someone off the street, and that's the police academy and getting a PRO training.
You should probably check with Montgomery, it has a much larger force and it supports the Valley as well. Smithers does a very small police department.
And so the updated letter that I believe Amy has sent, um, just simply takes out, uh, the identification of PRO or social worker. That way, whichever way of direction we go, uh, this grant is due next week, so things have been changing quickly. This support letter is not required for the grant, but we would just like to show that we have support of the commission to provide more prevention resources to the Fayette County schools.
I do.
Well, I, I know that the, uh, school in Montgomery, they have to use some assistance. I, I'm not that familiar with the Fayetteville school, are you?
How, who made those determinations and how?
Um, Mr. Hogan, he, he, um, yeah. And we have, currently, if we are awarded this funding under the prevention resource officer avenue, we would have to have a working agreement with the Board of Education, and they would be the ones to house the prevention resource officers, which is what they currently do, because the grant is on a reimbursement basis. So the Board of Education doesn't pay for their salary, they benefit from these different players. So that was their recommendation.
But there is, has nobody reached out to the schools or has anybody reached out to the schools to talk to them?
Uh, we attempted to get the, the principal at Valley to join our meeting this afternoon, but he was not there. And, um, he did not have, um, this care, so.
I wondered is that, because I, I think what you were getting at is that, you know, Fayetteville, um, isn't one that would stand out to me, like of, of, of the schools in, in the county that probably need the Valley, absolutely. I mean, they're kind of swinging the wind down there, because they don't even have a high school anymore. But, um, but, you know, there are other ones here in, in this county that I think can probably, you know, we've got a teacher back here, might be able to give some insight, but, but there, I would, what I would do if I were you is, is just reach out to the principals of, of all of them and see who wants one, you know, and how they would put somebody to work and, and what they think the needs of their school are. Other resources for you would be CPS, because they work with, you know, the, the at-risk kids all the time, or youth services.
Absolutely, um, in our minds, we were, you know, projecting to hire only two, but, you know, that could easily change. And really, if there is a need for one or two. Currently, Ben La Trail has an officer at Oakdale High School, and they are just the largest.
Right, right.
So that's where the, that's placed it.
I, I would just ask a little more, just to make sure, because the board, I mean, just like, that's just like us trying to tell, you know, Ruth, how to do her job, I mean, we just don't know enough about everything. And, and I, I seriously doubt they do, if those were their choices. But, you know, it's also going to depend on, the success will depend on if the principal wants that person in school or not.
Absolutely, and I don't think we have to be very specific in the grant. I think if we just say, like, as we did, that we could determine that, you know, give the funding that we want. The funding would start October, so it wouldn't be next year, it would be this year.
Oh, wow, that's fast.
Right.
Okay.
It's a quick turnaround, so.
Well, and the other thing too, is just like I mentioned, is there a police department that can staff it, you know?
Right, and that was our concern, that's why we initially changed to social resources. We thought we had less, we should, we got that first.
Okay, do we have a copy of the letter?
And it's actually changed, so it's generic, and it doesn't specify officers or social workers, because it kept going back and forth. It's just.
Just because there are a lot of, you know, blue parts, a lot of agencies, a lot of municipalities, the schools, the board, that, so. It's gone back and forth a few times.
We gave it to our letter reader. She can, she takes care of the grammar for both of us, so.
And Ruth, have you agreed to, um, Gabe's role in this?
Gabe, are you aware of your role in this?
Yes, I wrote the letter, didn't you?
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we're not putting someone on a, a team without.
Well, no, I was just wanting to make sure that, that his, the one who's telling him what to do and setting his priorities knew, knew what.
I need a motion on this.
I mean, we approve the letter.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to, um, do the support letter, uh, for Fayette County.
What's your group call?
Family Resource.
Oh, yeah, Family Resource Center.
Yes.
You wrote the letter, Gabe? Good, good letter. Unless I didn't get my pen out. You must have let Amy take a hack.
I just read it, it looks good.
Well, it kept changing, so I thought maybe just have a picture there.
I think that's a good idea. You don't want to pin yourself down too much anyway, because you're kind of with so few resources.
And I think, like I said, if we don't name this specific school through the grant, we can say we support K through twelve students, and that will, you know, open us up past the week deadline to maybe hammer out which school.
All the details. Well, feel free to reach out to me if you need contacts with anyone that I suggested.
Yeah, because she does a lot of work with children.
I represent them.
So, uh, but thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay.
Number one, this is appointing, appointing Fran Birdsong to the library board.
Okay. Becky?
Is Ms. Birdsong here as well?
Yeah. Oh, she's not, okay.
I was just curious, because I, I have a cousin who works in Chesterfield County Schools, so.
I'm Agent Sheldon, I'm the director of Fayetteville Public Library, and we need to create it as our representative. She, and in her resignation, it may, it's an expired term. So, for somebody in the North Loop area, we contacted Fran Birdsong, she seemed interested. Uh, I talked to her once, uh, my board director back there, Donna Smith, has been to, but she left her.
I wonder that we approve it.
In a second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, on the request from, uh, Fayette County Libraries. All those in favor?
Yeah, she looks very welcome.
Yeah.
That is, I'm here.
Ruth?
So, I don't see that, or Johann Belmania, so, if you want to go ahead and do like Eddie's exoneration stuff.
Eddie's exoneration.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, good morning.
Good morning. Personal property, that's probably a month's worth. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, personal property, so, exoneration's any and presented for the commission today.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to accept the exoneration for personal property. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, myself. Did you see Commander one? Everybody check, you say Commander one?
Where?
When you're, when you're front.
Oh, that's not mine.
Oh. Surprisingly, it's not mine.
That is funny. Okay, I, I move that we approve the real property exoneration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the real property exoneration presented this morning. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion to approve the refund. For us, there's two, I'm one, Eddie.
Just one, one.
There's two spots.
Did you, did you move?
Yes, sir.
I second.
Okay, we have an emotion. We have a motion and a second to accept the refund caused by the exoneration of personal property. All those in favor?
Wow.
I have a couple of, uh, segregated properties, but I'll have to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for keeping everything straight over there, Eddie.
Yes, sir, I'm glad.
Okay. Motion to approve payroll to thirtieth.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to, to, uh, approve payroll on the thirtieth. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Ruth, anything unusual on the vouchers and invoices?
It has to be the P card.
Tom, do you see anything?
No, I'm good, I'm, I'm motion to approve, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve vouchers and invoices and bear our vendors. All those in favor? Aye.
Wait, hold on one second. Ruth, is this a, is this a conference that we didn't attend?
Which one?
The auditor one on the P card?
How much is it?
Two hundred dollars.
I don't know if that's, because Ms. Michelle has one.
It has my name and it has his name.
Oh, well, then we'll get a refund for it, we have to pay however it's on the card.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I told you, because I canceled last one, I'll pay money. Okay. If they won't reimburse, be sure to let me know.
Okay, um, state settlements will have, oh, wait here. Approve the state settlement and sign an order removing Dreama McDaniel as executor of real estate of Dennis Quinn.
And then, so here's the first, this is a settlement list, if you want to do that one first.
Okay.
Anthony, did you review the order? Hannah's, Hannah's damn, Ruth, will you please? Yeah. Just didn't want him to have to fish for it.
Oh, yeah.
This list just keeps getting longer.
Yep. Actually, it's been a while, but yeah.
Okay. Right, right. It looks good to me.
You want to hand that beside you?
Did you, are you motion on that one?
Oh, I'm motion to approve it.
What, the?
That one.
The, the state settlements, sorry, you want to make a second?
The estate settlements or the order?
The estate settlements.
Okay, I second the state settlements.
Okay, we had a motion, a second, to approve the estate settlements, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is the order that removes Dreama McDaniel as executor of the estate of Dennis Quinn.
And appoints Brittany Anderson, I move that we approve the order.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the order removing Dreama McDaniel as executive, executor of the estate of Dennis Quinn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, the one that's, the one that's in your folder is the one that you found, because the signature sheet was wrong. Did you give them?
You have a menu table on there.
This one?
That one's right.
There's just one sheet signed on this.
Yeah, just that, yeah.
Just one sheet.
Back of the order.
Okay, um.
Who's Matt or do?
They're both on.
Okay, so, Meta River Rail Trail, they're on the line.
Um, Dr. David's here also.
That's not on the page.
Yeah, I was wondering why it's here. Okay, so, when, when will he be on the agenda?
Um. I think you put him on the fifteenth.
Right. That's under when y'all discuss future agendas. But I'd say the fifteenth is about Allison.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Dr. David, you'll be on the agenda for the fifteenth?
Do we have a time for him yet?
Yeah, it'll be nine o'clock, because it's.
No, no.
Okay, just one second there.
If we don't have it, you can just reach out and give it to him once.
At eleven o'clock. Your only agenda is eleven o'clock and fifteen.
But I think that was because it was requested to be, um, one of the final items that day.
Right.
So it could change later.
Okay, so you'll, you'll need to be here on the fifteenth of September at eleven o'clock. We're giving you a, a special slot. Okay? Alrighty. Okay, um, what did you say was next?
She said Meta River.
Oh, Meta River, okay. Matt?
Good morning, how are you?
Good, Matt, how are you?
I'm great. I'll let, uh, Bill take the lead on this one, it's for an MOU and a time extension request. Bill, are you on the call?
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
Yeah, thank you, Matt, um, uh, we got, for the delay, I'll jump, jump right in. Uh, first, I guess we'll, we'll cover the memorandum of, um, agreement, um, the MOU that we're going to send to West Virginia Department of Transportation. Hopefully, you know, you all have had time to at least do a quick read and maybe even absorb a few of the statements. We're basically reiterating a few things while we're, um, satisfying our administrative requirements for grants management. Um, we're inserting what should have been inserted some time back. My, uh, technical opinion about this is regardless of whether West Virginia DOT signs this or not, uh, we have done our level best to at least provide awareness, and, uh, we can move forward from here. But there are also additional expectations that we're asking DOT to, uh, to meet with that might be potentially a little different for them. But they were, they were told in, uh, months ago in a conference call that roles would be changing specifically because they are managing our Stafford Act funds, and this is a, uh, quite a different program than the TAP projects. Has some different requirements, so, uh, that's basically where we are with that, uh, MOU.
Did Anthony have time to review the MOU? Anthony, did you have time to review it in advance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Bill and Matt, our attorney is taking a look at this right now, so give us just a moment.
Uh, fair enough, and I think, um, what I may have blinded you to is, um, just to give you an FYI, uh, we, we performed a review of the, of the original agreement, and there is, it's referenced in the MOU here that in the original agreement, it was deficient of certain specific required clauses. So we actually have an inventory of that, if you'd like me to send that to.
We have a question. This, this, this match, um, are we not going to qualify for it unless the time extension is approved?
Um, the, it's not, not more of a, a match, but the, the twenty-five percent retained amount, um, by the state, it is dependent, release of that, which is, uh, not normal policy, but release of that is dependent on us receiving a time extension from FEMA.
So what are the implications of that? Johnny, what?
The, bottom, for right now, the bottom line is the county is best served to move forward, um, filling that hole financially, um, to get the project moving forward. It would, in essence, uh, put a greater, a better light on this project, so FEMA will, um, in the, and we can get to that in the time extension report request here in a second, but, uh, FEMA will look upon this favorably that we're moving forward under our own steam and not so much dependent on the program, which puts them in a precarious position with certain background federal rules.
What is the financial commitment that, I mean, is it, is it additional funding or the funding that Department of Highways has, or? I'm just trying to understand, because it seems like we keep talking about funding. You know, I always bring that up to you on the agenda, because I think you, there's more money going into a trail when people without water and bridges for traffic.
Understood, um, right, there, there's a, a several, actually, there's a lot of math on the table. Um, in a nutshell, uh, Division of Highways is hanging their hat on moving forward on administrative, on bidding of the project, depending on having the full original estimate. So that in, 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 um, in addition to the monies that we provided in the, uh, in the original, seventy-five percent disbursement of the, of the original estimate, the leftover, they're waiting for that leftover. So technically Fayette County is responsible by that original agreement to provide that leftover amount. Where that come from, comes from, DOT is indifferent, and rightfully so, they just need that gap filled, so the bids can come in. By the original agreement signed in two thousand eighteen, once the bids do come in, Fayette County is then further responsible for any overages yielded from that bidding process. So, uh, that's the, those, the one big at the other type situation. And then on the backside, on the reimbursement piece, um, again, in the, we'll cover that in a time extension letter, where the reimbursement piece is that, uh, the, certainly FEMA has approved the original estimate, we're asking them to increase that, so there will be additional financial moves in the background. But the long and the short of it is that Fayette County is, you know, that's the, the best position for Fayette County to be in, and I spoke with Ruth about this, uh, a few days ago, unfortunately, your best position is your worst position, because it does ask you to move forward with the process and the activity of repairing the trail, um, with, uh, essentially not a promise of anything yet.
Well, how, but how much money are we commit, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the dollar amounts.
Right, so by the agreement, there's a two hundred and some thousand dollar amount, uh, Matt, do you have the specific number handy? But there's a, there's a.
Not, it's two hundred and eighty some thousand, and that's what was agreed, um, I don't know, probably about a year ago. We, we were able to get approval from the governor's office to release that two hundred and eighty thousand contingent upon this time extension request approval.
So the money, the source of the money was what? Because you said approval from the governor's office, no, but they're talking about.
That's, that's the twenty-five percent that was retained, um, by West Virginia Homeland Security. When, when Fayette County got the, uh, I believe one point one million dollars from, from FEMA, um, twenty-five percent of that was retained by West Virginia Homeland Security and Emergency Management. They don't release that typically until the project closes out. When we had talked about it before, uh, Fayette County didn't have the money to, uh, to, to spend to go ahead and keep the project going, that, that best approach that Bill's speaking to is just Fayette County, fund everything without waiting on FEMA. But at the time, we, uh, we petitioned West Virginia Homeland Security, who needed approval from the governor's office to release the twenty-five percent, um, or at least a portion of that, to get DOH moving, uh, to, to put the project out to bid. Uh, that was approved, but the, the, they put a stipulation on releasing those funds. One stipulation is that FEMA has to approve the, the time extension. What, what they do not want to happen is they don't want to release that twenty-five percent. The time extension doesn't get approved, and they've already given more than seventy-five percent of the project. And then the second statement stipulation was, is that two hundred and, approximately two hundred and eighty thousand had to go directly to DOH and couldn't go to Fayette County. But that, those, those funds were, those are FEMA funds that were, were given, um, on the Meta River Rail Trail project. And again, it's that two hundred and eighty thousand is what DOH needs in order to have, to, to put it out to bid. They don't, they're not going to put a project out to bid unless they have the entire project estimate in their bank account, ready to pay out toward the, the bid, and then as Bill mentioned.
You, you, you kept mentioning, uh, no matter what, we're responsible going back to the original agreement of twenty eighteen. It, it, I've heard you say that two or three times when you explained this. So no matter what, no matter what happens, you go back to the original agreement, we're going to be responsible for the original agreement, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, if, if, if this is, doesn't happen, it takes us back to twenty eight, twenty eighteen at the original agreement, that's being responsible anyway.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple more questions. One is, what's the status of the letter for the extension? Because I know we've discussed this already, and I thought we signed something. We don't?
Signed it.
We haven't?
It should, it should be in your hands today.
Or are we just now getting, did we discuss this a long time ago?
Yeah.
It, it, it was discussed, but it was, that was to, in the, in the effort of hiring Chapman Technical Group to get their work completed, so that the time extension requests could be prepared.
Yeah, but that was a long time ago, like, how, I mean.
Yeah, you're correct.
We were contingent on, um, the time, any time extension request that goes to FEMA, and, and nowadays, the, the state is requiring it more, and they're getting ready to put it in black and white policy. But any time extension going to FEMA will require a construction timeline created by a certified engineer, a certified cost estimator. So that was the rush, um, when you described a long time ago, that was, that, that was the last movement that I can, I'm tracking, that we needed a signature from the commission to get Chapman Technical onboard, and then to we give them a notice to proceed to do that advanced work, um, so we'd have it in the time extension request. Um, and again, that's one of the. Um, and again, that's one of the, um, that's one of the product that's going to be attached to the, to the letter that you have today. Um, and I, I can provide that or Ruth actually has access to that, but we, we can provide that in a moment's notice if you'd like to see that.
Now, just for, for my edification and because I'm still learning this issue and I don't remember all the details from the last time you guys were on here, um, when this, what caused the delay in the first place that made us have to request this extension of a deadline?
Uh, we've spelled it out. If you want to transition, if we don't have any other questions on the MOU specifically, um, we can transition or however you want to do that. We can talk about the time extension. In the extension letter, we list the extenuating circumstances of how we got to where we got to, if that makes sense. We've, um, we're providing that to FEMA. Extenuating circumstances are certainly a, a factor in their consideration on time extensions. They realize it's real life, we have, we have local challenges. So we've laid that out, um, including our latest technical information, um, for their consideration of moving forward. And we can, we can highlight the specific points of the letter if you'd like to.
No, I found it.
Anthony, did you notice anything there?
I have a couple of questions. This paper actually says the county remains solely responsible for the administrative requirements of the FEMA PA program. How exactly is the county, um, monitoring and making sure that we're complying with these requirements? Because this kind of seems like it's out of the wheelhouse for your average county employees.
We have a concern. The guy on the line.
So, well, I just want to verify that.
Yes, so the county is.
You're the one who's going to be responsible for making sure we take, that we meet all of these requirements?
Yes, that generally, the, the, the desired, uh, position is, uh, would be a local authorized official. And then of course, uh, my existence as a technical entity is to, is to, to support the decision-making or add to the decision-making however I can on that. But, um, more technically, the, the county, um, encumbered itself to specific grants requirements, grants rules. So in, in pursuant, uh, or in pursuing that compliance, this MOU is part of that discussion and, um, the, um, those activities that would satisfy all broad requirements of the program.
Okay. And then down below it says this document binds all parties' current grants management rules for the use of Robert D. Stafford Act funds. I'm assuming your role in all of this is also to make sure that we, we are in compliance with the appropriate management rules.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that would be correct.
Okay, those are the ones you.
Okay. If I can give an example of, of some of the issues we've been having, um, like, for example, we needed, um, evidence of the 60, approximately $68,000 that's been spent on engineering. We needed the invoices and evidence that those invoices had been paid and we contacted the DOH and they said, well, get, get that from the engineer and we just need through Bill's help, making sure that, and, and we're probably going to, we're going to have to go higher up in DOH to get what we need, but just making sure that as we move forward, you know, when it, when a bill's paid with that money, that Fayette County gets a copy of the invoice and gets coffee of the proof of payment, um, without having to go chase contractors down, that their DOH is helping with the administration, that Bill's making sure that all, all that's in place and correct.
That's right. That's right. Unfortunately, that answer is, uh, is, does not comport with their, uh, DOH's original agreement with Fayette County. Um, and in the MOU, the first whereas takes us back to the basics and that statement is in that the DOH would, or DOT specifically would help us meet the requirements of the FEMA program. So no matter what, they've got to step up, up certain functions. Um, and we're, we're basically asking for a proactive partner that the FEMA program needs, that maybe perhaps that, that their normal roles, TAP program does not require them. So we're, we're actually, they're, we're, they're dealing with a fish out of water situation on their end. And, and, and to put a period on that statement from Matt, we still need those documents from Division of Highways. We could certainly go get those documents from Chapman, we're in active conversation from them. However, the more appropriate process should be to get it from our project administrator, which is DOT on the bridge.
Shouldn't we just get it from whoever, wherever we can get it the quickest?
That would be Chapman.
Yes, yes, I, I would, I'd absolutely agree with that. However, ultimately, there are some background documents that DOT needs to provide to Fayette County for us to, uh, remain compliant and, uh, so they, they need to step up to the plate on that activity.
What are the implications if it doesn't?
Uh, the, the standard, uh, language would be jeopardizing federal funds. Um, from what I see in the, uh, appeals response database, uh, headquarters for FEMA, because the appeals process has two levels. The first, if, if we appeal any decisions, perhaps, um, FEMA comes back and denies this time extension request, um, I would certainly recommend an appeal. Um, so that, that, uh, first level appeal would go to Philadelphia, the FEMA region. Um, and then if they come back and we don't gain satisfaction, we have a second level, a final level that goes to headquarters. And once headquarters renders a decision, that the regions don't set precedence, um, headquarters does. And the way they do that is in the, uh, second appeals response database. So program geeks like I, like myself, we, we live in there to, to get a sense of where headquarters remains. They are very religious to supporting the regions, um, in the, in the timeline discussion. So more often than not, headquarters, uh, will try to split the hair and not say no, but they can, uh, effectively take back all the money.
And what's your assessment of whether we're going to get approved for an extension based on our extenuating circumstances?
Um, as long as we continue to move forward, we are under a good light right now. We have some forward progression, bringing Chapman Technical onboard, uh, plus the original homework that was done by the 2018 agreement with DOT and Chapman, that, that's being highlighted now. At least FEMA has some information and the, the program is, is a little abstract in that it gives a, a bit of gray to FEMA, the authority for FEMA to, to, um, in essence, continue to participate as long as we are showing progression.
Okay. And how long do you think the process, how long does it normally take to, for them to consider and grant or deny our request?
Um, the, the, the standard window FEMA has for correspondence response, um, in it, especially in this situation, um, is 90 days. Uh, the state itself also has 90 days. Um, however, the state of West Virginia will not take that long. They, number one, they realize our situation with this project, but in general, they are very quick to turn around our, um, uh, our correspondence to FEMA. The longest I've seen the state take is four days. And, uh, and then they'll turn around and, and by process, the state has to put a cover letter on it and then send it on to FEMA, uh, which is, will happen. That, that'll be pretty quick. So we, we should get a response once we submit this to the state within 180 days.
I was going to, I was going to ask, uh, uh, because of the situation, do you think everybody would be quicker?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, that's, that's correct because the, the, the folks who would be receiving this at the federal end, they know it's coming.
Candy.
They know it's coming. Uh.
I have one more question. So, so of the 280K, um, that we, you know, committed to in 2018, um, so we have, have we spent any of that yet? No? And so how much of that, I, I'm just trying to figure out what our risk is, um, like how much of that is, you know, if they deny us, you know, once we start spending, how much of that do you think we're going to spend while this process plays out?
It's coming from the state.
The state will send that money if the.
It's our money, but they're sending it.
But what she's asking is are we going to start? Because, you know, we discussed a certain number, are we going to start spending that now or after the time extension's approved?
Well, they said we need to spend it, start spending it now to show good faith.
Is that the 60,000 Chapman Technical project and the contract fee and that kind of thing? Because we've already paid 20 whatever to Chapman and.
Yeah. From what I understood, the Chapman was part of it, but that, it sounds like you guys are saying we need to start work.
They, I think they did.
I mean, can you hear what, what all we're discussing? We're trying to figure out like, you know, what our, what our risk is, you know, if they, you know, what, where are we going to be if they deny the extension? That's kind of what we're trying to understand or else why I'm.
Okay. Worst case scenario, worst case scenario, the county's, um, risk potentially is the, the full estimate of the cost to fix your facility, fix the county's facility. So, you know, you could say, um, that it's $1 million. On paper, I think, uh, I would estimate between, um, Chapman, uh, my company and Green Bar Environmental, we're less than $100,000 spent to get to this point.
To get to this point, but what about in the next potentially 180 days?
Um, the next 180 days are more of a wait and see, um, unless Matt has, you know, big activities for me programmatically, I'm at a work stoppage and still until, unless you all ask me to do something else or the state and FEMA respond, um, so I would be off the clock until that happens. Um, and I don't know that Chapman Technical has a whole lot of workload, um, until that response comes in either. Matt, can you confirm that or correct that?
Yeah, but I, I, in, in, in effort to get, get her an answer, um, I mean, you're, you're worried about what's your short-term risk here? What are, what's, what's the risk that develops over the next 180 days? And, um, so in an ideal situation, Fayette County would have paid the cost of the project and, and everything moved forward and, and where you're at now. And that, and part of that includes, like, if you send a check to, to DOH tomorrow for the approximately $280,000 that they're looking for, um, you know, that's, that's a perfect world situation. Um, but, you know, we've wanted to show progress, so, uh, and, and we've done the work that was, was necessary with hiring Chapman to get the time extension approved and, and Chapman is working on the design for the trail work. Um, so you, Fayette County has spent money for Chapman, um, to show progress on the project. Um, but it's not, as, as Bill was mentioning, like, the best-case scenario is you pay the $280,000 and, and this, and Fayette County can decide to do what they, what you, what you choose, but if I'm in your seat, I'm looking at, do I take a risk with what, what's been paid with Chapman, you know, agreed to, to pay Chapman for their engineering work? Or do you take the risk and you pay that plus $280,000 to keep the DOH moving? And that's a decision ultimately you need to make. Um, but obviously there, you know, if you pay $280,000 and the time extension isn't approved, then that's money that, you know, you spent that you won't get reimbursed for.
Okay, but one big, one big question that we've talked about a couple of weeks ago when you talked with Ruth and I, we're looking at 280,000 plus 100,000 for you guys, that's 380. We have a small window for extra expenses and that's it. If we go above that amount, the project's off.
Yeah, and, and that extra amount, that, that was an estimate, this, I'm, I'm going to say a guesstimate from Chapman about what, where the, where the bids will come in, um, just using round numbers, let's say that, um, I mean, what they did, I think it was 15% they added to the estimated project costs, uh, moving forward to come up with that extra money that would be needed. Um, it's really, we're going to have to figure out, once the project's bid, how much more or, you know, doubt it's less, but you know, that's, that's an option until we don't know what that extra amount is until you find out what your lowest bid amount is to know, did it come over, is it under? How much over is it? Um, because the next step for DOH is before they can award the construction contract for the bridge, they would want to have all the money needed to award that contract.
Okay, so our next step is to get the approval of the time extension and then the state will pay the extra $268,000 so that the DOH can get the, um, bridge bid out, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm still trying to find, I'm, I'm still trying to understand where this 280,000 came from.
So when we originally got the grant?
Hmm.
So it's the state's policy, they hold 25% of the total.
So is this from?
So that's the amount they're holding and normally they wouldn't release it until it's called out.
That's the percentage of the original 1.1?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, I mean, that, that money isn't the actual 25, because if you do 25% of the total grant amount, it doesn't equal the amount that DOH is asking for. But what it, what it does match is the total construction and design estimate amount that the DOH prepared minus the mi, the amount of money they've already received from Fayette County. And that's where that dollar amount comes from. And that money will be pulled from the 25, the 25% is actually more than the DOH is asking for. There will still be money left with West Virginia Homeland Security. And just going off of memory, I think it's around between 30 and 40,000 that will be left over.
So DOH already has this money or?
They have 876,000 of FEMA's money.
Oh, FEMA.
It's FEMA grant, but.
Yeah.
The county got the grant and then in 2018, they agreed to transfer to Department of Highways and handle it because it's a rail trail and that's what they do where department transportation, whatever. And that's why they have the money and that's where all.
So we're not committing to money that we've, that.
No.
To any additional money that we weren't expecting.
Right now at this time.
That number, I'm going to reuse the one we discussed the other day. And that's like, problem undone, if there is any other issues done.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thanks for indulging me because I'm still trying to.
It's okay. Certainly, okay. There's a lot of math on the table, a lot of math on the table. So it, and, and, and it didn't help that administratively, we have a complicated process moving forward that was laid down on paper. So, um, to be confused would be normal.
Okay. I'm ready to move forward.
So anything with FEMA, it's screwy and.
Was it, oh, listen, trust me, I'm, I've worked with FEMA when I was a Fed. So actually FEMA is a pretty good organization. It just had the sad fate of getting under Department of Homeland Security.
Okay, I need a motion then.
Um, I need to hear from Anthony that he's fine with MOU.
He'll be right.
Okay. He just stepped up. Do you want to take a quick timeout?
We can. We're going to take a quick timeout, um, quick break and wait till our attorney comes back. So, uh, it'll be about five minutes.
Roger that, sir. And then I, I heard you mention about the MOU, if I can also inject that we, uh, would like for you to, you all to discuss and approve the time extension letter as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Don't say little boys.
He said outhouse this time, Jay. He was pretty good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
He's, yeah, he's not back yet, he probably had, I'm guessing he got summoned by a judge or something, because that's normally what causes this kind of absence.
Okay. All right, we're, we're back in session again. Our, our attorney has probably gotten taken, uh, is taking questions by maybe one of the judges. So um, he said that the MOU was okay.
Did he?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought the letter was okay as well.
The letter was fine, I mean, it's just a letter.
No, I think you did a good job on that.
So we need to do these one at a time, one for the letter and then one for the MOU.
And, and Matt, I, I just urge you to be, you know, um, cautious with the funds here because, you know, this has gone on a long time and I, you know, I read that the justifications and stuff and, and, you know, I, I don't want the county to have invested this kind of money into this kind of project and then, and then lose everything. And also don't want us to expend any more than we have to, to try to save ourselves from losing everything because we didn't manage it well to begin with, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the approach we're taking.
Okay, well, I, I moved that we approved the letter for Mr. Hines to send to, um, who was it, to FEMA.
A second. Okay, we have a motion to second to send the, uh, have Bill Hines send the letter to FEMA. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is passed and we need to sign that.
And then I moved that we also approved the, uh, the MOU, approve and sign the MOU between the commission and the Department of Transportation to facilitate the um, project funding.
A second. Okay, we have a motion to second to authorize and sign the MOU, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. For you, okay. Now. Another one.
I want to, I need to talk to him real, just real quick.
Go ahead.
I'll do it right now.
Okay, Jenna?
I don't see.
Jenna Grayson, are you on there?
Yeah, she's there. Yeah, she's right.
Good morning.
Hey Jenna.
How are you guys?
We have um, State Treasurer Raleigh Moore here. Um, we need to take care of that first and then we'll come back to you.
Okay, I do, I do, um, I do have the folks from House Levine joining me today. Um, yeah, just let me know, let me know when you're ready.
Okay, it shouldn't take any more than ten, fifteen minutes tops for them.
Okay, great.
Oh, that was, yes. He's typical lawyer.
Uh, you need to get on it.
Yeah, I know, they're, they're cutting it short today. And I know I brought in a big thing. All right, how many other people we waiting on? Austin? He just sent me a text, he sent me a text.
I wouldn't wait on him either.
He says, hey, I'm like three minutes out.
Is that Austin time?
Yeah, that's Austin time, he's always running late, so we can have fun with that one.
He is very important. We're not moving forward.
I mean, I thought we was moving forward, I don't know what we're doing now.
John.
Well.
Let's, let's just get that update, I don't think it'll take very long.
She only had fifteen minutes on her, I don't think.
All right, Jenna, let's go ahead, we'll get you taken care of.
Great, thanks guys, I appreciate it. Um, so sorry to be tuning in virtually today, um, NRG RDA has moved to virtual meetings only unless mission critical. Um, the decision was made to protect our staff members and um, those with young children who were unable to get the vaccine. I do have Tricia Parks and Nick Davis with us today from House Levine and they are actually going to give the update. Um, they are both in the House Levine team out of Chicago and um, Nick has a couple of slides prepared to Amy if you don't mind uh, giving him screen share.
Screen share.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Is everyone able to see my screen?
We cannot see it.
No, we can see you but not your screen.
That's no good, you can see my screen, Tricia, all right, um.
Hang on, wait a minute. We're going to try again.
Okay.
Go ahead and try again.
Oh, I did, uh.
Okay, so we are not.
No.
Let's see, hang on a second, wait a minute, let's try this.
So I can see it.
Okay.
Hang on one second.
You can't mail it last because you're recording.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's what I was trying to do. It's a white screen, says Fayette County Comprehensive Plan.
Yep.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, all right, so um, well, as Jen has mentioned, I, we pulled together a presentation, just real quick, go through a couple of things about kind of giving you a project status update on where we're at with the Fayette County Comprehensive Plan. Uh, real, real quick, we're going to go through, just we're completed, uh, want to talk about some of the upcoming meetings and deliverables, what we're working on inside of tasks two and four. Um, also just a current project timeline overview and then a recommendation to extend some of the public engagement. Uh, and then any questions or comments that you may have, we can go through that. So we're completed up to this point, um, you know, we've done our staff kickoff, we're in the process and we'll continue to, to collect data um, relevant to the comprehensive plan. Uh, we've prepared a comprehensive plan branding and collateral, we could show a little bit of that if you have any, any thoughts. We've also launched a project website, um, as part of that project website, there's an opportunity to do this online web mapping uh, tool where, you know, anybody that wants to participate can create their own map of the county and, and give us some insight on what some of the challenges or opportunities are. There's also online county questionnaires, um, we're building off of the uh, pre-survey that was prepared by Jenna and her team. Uh, we're going to be pushing these, these materials out over the next couple of weeks to just get more feedback. Um, we've also prepared and started to uh, provide the do it yourself kits, the DIY kits. Um, and then a community facility survey has gone out, so that's, that's available. We're going to continue to work with the communities, uh, facility providers to the best that we can to get information on what some of their challenges are, um, what some of their future plans are. So that's work that's been completed as part of task one. Um, we're really moving into tasks two, three and four, which typically run sort of parallel to one another um, as part of, you know, the contract and what we originally scoped to do. Um, and it was a very compressed timeline, that current timeline had our team conducting the upfront public engagement through mid-September. So over the next three weeks, um, that would include, I know it can be hard to see, but that would include, um, you know, a lot of what needs to be done inside the community engagement. So, you know, getting on, on the ground, doing some reconnaissance, meeting with a lot of local stakeholders and, and residents in the county. Um, that was a big part, we were in the field for a week next, next week and just due to some of the um, challenges that have come from, you know, the new variant and COVID, we pulled back on some of those events. Um, and then also we were going to be out there in three weeks to, to conduct these visioning workshops, same thing, just with some of those challenges, there's a comfort concern about holding these events. So with that, those upcoming meetings and deliverables sort of looked like this, we had them in these three buckets, what we were doing for engagement, um, so this was trip one, this was next week, August thirty through the third. Uh, we would be meeting with the project team, the local outreach team, um, meeting with the Fayette County Commission, meeting with focus groups, key person interviews and reconnaissance. Uh, then over the next couple of weeks, we were going to be developing the existing conditions memo. And then, as I mentioned, we were going to be back out there for another trip, September thirteenth through the seventeenth, to do uh, the immersive outreach and the countywide visioning workshops. So in light of some of these challenges with COVID and concerns about getting people in larger groups to participate and not getting the kinds of engagement that we expected, these are some of the ones that stick out, meeting with the project team, getting a local outreach team pulled together to do all of the different um, uh, kind of like follow-up work that needs to be done over the next month or so. Uh, holding these focus groups, holding the key person interviews and then looking out further ahead a couple of weeks, that immersive outreach and countywide visioning workshop. So our recommendation is to extend the engagement. So instead of trying to do this over the next three weeks, really extending this over the next six, oh.
Can't do that. Can't do that.
Cannot do that.
Well.
Wait a minute, tell me.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay. Is, is, are the, is the Delta variant concerned that you're, that your people are concerned about traveling and coming to our community, or you're concerned that there won't be enough participation should you make that trip due to the Delta variant?
It's, it's mostly the latter, so just.
Okay, because I don't share that concern, I, just so you know, I don't share that concern, I mean, I live here and move around in this community, and I don't see us slowing down a whole lot.
Okay.
Thought of it, but.
And so, maybe I'll, I'll keep going through this, I only have a few more slides, and then if you want to provide feedback or comment, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
So our, our recommendation is to extend the public engagement for a couple of reasons, one, because of what needs to happen next week, there's already challenges in getting people to line up. Um, over the last couple of weeks, we've been trying to get more and more people involved in doing stakeholder interviews and focus groups, um, we're not getting the turnout that we would like to get, so that's something that we'd like to consider, at least over the next few weeks, getting those groups lined up for that, that upfront community engagement. Um, so I know this, this change from three weeks to sixteen weeks has implications because of the need to have a, an adopted plan by the end of the year, we've already started to contact, uh, the representatives of the state to determine whether or not this is feasible, what the recommendations from their end would be, what some of the challenges might be if you don't have this comprehensive plan updated by the end of the year, so we can talk a bit about that as well. Um, but this also gives us an opportunity to establish this local outreach team in a way that would give them, um, sort of like the tools they're gonna need, the expertise they're gonna need to conduct these workshops, whether they're virtual or whether they're in person, we would be prepared to cover this from a couple of different, um, avenues, so I can appreciate that not everybody's concerned about COVID or the variant. Um, for those that are, or for any that are that want to participate in this process, we're just trying to find as many different opportunities or as many different ways that we can get out to the community as possible. So as I mentioned, the, the recommendation is to extend this, so here's our current timeline, um, pushing this out a couple of weeks, so we would get this from three weeks to really putting this over three months. Uh, and then that would allow us to kind of break this up into phases, that first phase would be us still coming in the field, we need to do the reconnaissance, so part of my team will be there next week, um, we'll have the Fayette County Commission presentation, we'd like to do that in person, if that's something that, um, we're able to do, and we would like to meet with the project team, start coordinating with the local outreach team, we have sixteen volunteers, we have the resource coordinators from the county, working with NRG RDA staff. Um, there's other representatives from the city and populated areas that we'd like to engage and get as part of this process, and then there's orientation and training. Um, so regardless if this is in-person or virtual, this, this needs to occur for us to get out into the county. Um, and then through October, we would start a collateral blitz, get the message out there, let people know that there's ways to participate, the DIY kits, focus groups, key person interviews. With this extension on our timeline, we would have an opportunity to join regularly scheduled, uh, scheduled meetings, so whatever that might be, um, and then phase three would be the immersive outreach, the countywide visioning workshops, uh, opportunities for us to still drop in either virtually or in person, if that's something that we can schedule. Uh, and then doing those visioning workshops at, at night to, to get feedback, again, virtual or in person, whatever works best, and then finding ways to, or continuing to keep people involved, participants involved, um, would be a big part of this, so we're collecting and maintaining a list of contacts that have, uh, those that have plugged in and started to get involved, and just making sure that we can keep them involved throughout the rest of the process. That would put us into November deliverables, it would be the same things that we were gonna deliver, this also added a couple of meetings and events, so it's not like we're just extending this over sixteen weeks, it's the same thing, there's a lot of new things that have been added into it, different, um, different events, different meetings, you know, really leveraging that local outreach team more than, um, we've been able to over the last few weeks. And then down the line, we would be working on the comprehensive plan elements and policies, so again, that would lead to the plan elements, and ultimately the final plan and document for adoption. So I know that's a lot of information to go through, if there, I mean, now we can take any questions, any comments, concerns.
Yeah, also, Angela, or, um, Angela, Allison, sorry, um. I, I did speak to, um, the House Judicial Office at the state, and they seem to think that it would be, they basically said there's no repercussions except the, the threat that, you know. Um, Fayette County could face, and so after speaking, Angela spoke with Anthony briefly, and, um, so this, this has all come on really quickly, obviously, NRG RDA just this week went on, went into virtual meetings only, and so this has been something that's happened quickly over the past two days. Um, and so, feel free to ask away if you have questions, thoughts, concerns, like, that's why Nick and, Nick, Tricia, and also Lauren Weatherford and Allison Smith are here as well with their experience with comprehensive plans. So COVID, obviously not an ideal situation, but, uh, we're just trying to, to do what's best, we want to make sure that we have ample opportunity to get out into the community and connect with folks, and we're fearful with the Delta variant, rising COVID numbers, and the short timeline, those three stacked together, like, we, we don't feel as though it's possible to truly get a plan that's representative of what our community wants.
I absolutely agree with what Jenna just said, and, you know, Nick, Nick's, uh, suggestion for an extension, we are concerned about public participation in the valley because we have experienced increased positive cases, so we've pivoted to, um, online events or postponing events, even our local daycare is closed this week because of positive cases, so. Uh, we want to maximize opportunities for public input, and we want to maintain public safety, so I for one support an extension.
Yeah, but you're in Chicago, right? I need people to introduce themselves, if I haven't met you, please.
Sorry, uh, I'm from Chi, Nick, I'm from Chicago, um, and then Tricia on my team is also out of Chicago.
And I'm an extension agent working in Montgomery and Smithers.
Well, a couple of things come to mind for me, one is, um, you know, it's, it's possible, given the, you know, the variant that, you know, the state government may grant extensions to the counties for this, because we're supposed to be holding public meetings required to by statute as a part of our information gathering for this process, whether or not it involves a contract firm or not. Um, my second thought is, um, well, one thought is we have Bridge Day coming up, a huge event here where there might be an opportunity to set up a booth or something to, and I, I'm sorry Becky, our bridge, she's in charge of our Bridge Day and she's online, but. Um, we may be able to set up a booth to try to do some information gathering from locals there, or maybe partner with a booth that's already set up, a vendor that's already set up to, you know, put some of those packets out. My third concern is, um, what happens when gamma dealt, gamma variant comes out, you know, there's, you know, we're gonna continue to have these kind of things, and, and I think that, you know, the people who are willing to risk coming out to do certain things are gonna take that risk one way or the other, whether they're masked or not, so I'd like to hear your responses to those things.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, um, go ahead, well.
Yeah. Obviously, Bridge, Bridge Day, so there's a couple of events that we've, we've picked up that we know we want to provide materials to the county, also to, uh, NRG RDA, so we've already prepared those materials, any booth, any, any kind of pop-up event or any local event that's already occurring, we would, we would love to have an opportunity to set up. Um, that's a big part of what we want to use the local outreach team for as well, if we're in the field, we would also like to participate. Um, the, the concerns about the, the future variant sort of that might be, I think, I want to stress, we're not pausing anything, and in fact, all we're trying to do is just give us a little bit more time to come at this from a couple of different angles, as opposed to rely on just that, we're gonna be in the week, or we were gonna be in the field for an entire week doing all of these different in-person engagements. Um, and now our, our plan is, we just need a little bit more time to do still in-person engagements, but also some online opportunities for those who do want to participate that way, or at least are given the opportunity to participate that way, so we're not pausing anything, and that, that's a really important distinction, so if there is five more variants that come, um, all we're asking for is an extension in time now, so we can better prepare for this COVID implication, this, this, this change in our, our strategy. But moving forward, it won't impact any other aspect of what we're preparing for this, for this comprehensive plan. It's a good point, I mean, we talked about this a lot over the last couple of days, and what I don't want to do is strike a line, like, here we pause until COVID's over, because none of us have a crystal ball, we have no idea if that's ever gonna happen, or if it's happening anytime soon. So the extension we're asking for, the two additional months, is just to get our footing on some other strategies.
What is the plan if, if, if the, if you extend the deadline to, because part of the purpose of this was to help us comply with our requirement to update our comp plan, and that's what this is, and it has to be in when, November, December, end of the year.
Yep, so originally our goal is, sorry, the original, uh, goal was to get this to you by November nineteenth for your adoption process, so you would have it on the books by the end of the year. Um, that's part of what we're, we're reaching out to the state to determine, and again, it's, it's our experience, we've worked on comprehensive plans across the country where you're not held liable by the state, they're not coming after you if you don't have a revised, uh, comprehensive plan, you know, January one. It does open you up to some challenges from the public, if someone from the public has issue with the current comprehensive plan, and you're not in accordance, or you're not meeting the state's requirements, that's the challenge, so again, that's where, I know Jenna's already started to coordinate with the state, we can start to coordinate with, uh, the county attorney, I mean, just making sure that you're in the right, so you're not gonna get, um, you know, put in a position where you're, you're not meeting state statute.
Okay, and I just had another question too, the, um, have you guys ever used like local media, like television media and radio and stuff to get the word out on?
Yeah.
Things out.
Allison, on that note, I actually have been meeting with, um, Mike Fulton, who is a local PR, um, person about how to try and extend into like, make contacts with the Fayette Tribune and some of the radio stations around here to share the word about the comprehensive plan, so that, that was actually a meeting I had yesterday through this whole, like, online potential pivot, um, around the meeting, so, yeah, absolutely.
My thought is more in terms of maybe a, a, like a public service kind of thing, like, where we can film something and, and, you know, ask the public to participate or promote it in a way, and it's really, I mean, I just ran for office, I happen to know it's not that expensive to get some of this stuff, you know, on W O A Y or, you know, um, the river and some of these places, if we can, you know, promote it and then get those packages out and get the website information out there. Maybe even some signs that the towns can hang up like they do the mask up signs or something.
On, yeah, on that note, I would say Nick is planning on, um, providing, or their team is running on providing, like, paper collateral and, and that way, but also, I'll pivot to Lauren, who had, Lauren and Allison, who have a great plan around that.
Sweet.
Um, so a couple of things, one, I, I just want to share with you all, Lauren Weatherford, WVU Extension Service, but that we are, it, everyone, no one ever wants a delay, I mean, that's, you know, that's understandable, but I do want to kind of emphasize that right now, we had, we had a very aggressive ten, timeline, and I understand the reasons for that a hundred percent. If the state requirements are allowed to be extended, as Jenna is trying to, you know, finalize and verify, then I do highly recommend that we take this short extension, and a one-time extension only. The reason is, is because that very aggressive timeline that we started out with is, is truly proving to be difficult at this point, and the, I think you run into the difference between, are you doing it properly so that it gets done the way you do it, or are you getting it done to get it done? And I think that is the decision that you're kind of facing right now, it's not just about COVID, if we do it in the short timeline, we will be able to reach certain people who are already leaders in our community. But the question is, we do not, we are not sure if we will be able to reach the outline community, the people who are not involved on a regular basis, basis in leadership roles. In order for a comp plan to be truly successful, you need to have the opportunity to reach them, some of the marketing that we're talking about, it's gonna take a little bit more time than within the next month, which really, we're looking at trying to gather this feedback within the month of September, that is an incredibly difficult timeline to meet. We, of course, will respect whatever decision you make, and we will move forward, but I just wanted to share that part of it, a lot of these plans take place over the course of an entire year, so a three-month timeline is, is really difficult, and we're looking at trying to extend it just a couple of months to make sure we do it well. In terms of some of the education and promotion that, um, myself and Allison Smith, who's with West Virginia State, she's the extension agent down in the valley, that we've been working on is, uh, twofold, one, working with our outreach team to provide them training on the comp plan, the elements of the comp plan, much like what I presented to you earlier, but in a little more detail just about the comp plan. And then also how to work with the community to make sure that you're not talking at people, but you're getting feedback from people, the kind of guided feedback that we need in order to make sure that this plan is, is guided by people's preferences and people's concerns, which is what we need to address. Um, so we're looking at doing recorded trainings that will be available to the public on what is a comprehensive plan, what are the elements, and why does it mean something to you? Those will be available virtually, and then also looking at some Zoom sessions that we'll be able to do out in the various regions of the county, um, on the same type of training, so that not only are we trying to get people to provide us feedback, but we're providing education on why they should give us feedback. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, because I just said a whole lot in a short period of time.
Well, Lauren, thank you for your information, and, uh, thank everyone for their information, I know that Tom is on the committee, and, uh, Allison and I, I feel will both pitch in with anything that we can. But we still have to respect the timeline until we're actually granted an extension.
Well, I think it's worth exploring, one, whether we can get an extension, if we can, then of course, we'll seek one, if we can't, what are the options with regard to adopting the old plan and amending it, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how we can, you know, work within the statute and the bureaucracy to try to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. I agree with you, I don't think we should rush it, um, it, it's just a matter of how firm is our deadline, and is there any wiggle room anywhere?
I, Anthony, is that, yeah, is that something, I, I can't see, are y'all looking at Anthony on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay.
We'll stare at him just for a minute, we can explore this later, I think we're all open to extending the deadline if we can get an extension.
True.
Okay.
Bottom line.
Okay. Okay, great.
And as far as working on trying to get it on radio and, and TV, um, I'll be able to help with that on two stations, so.
Um, I do want to be clear that the, the House Levine team will still be here and doing reconnaissance out in the field next week, and we are still, like Nick said, planning on holding the county commission, Fayette County, or Fayette County Commission, Region Four, and NRG RDA, you'll, that will still be in person as we're considering it mission critical.
We'll be here.
Okay, so that's September first from nine to eleven.
Right.
I just want to thank the commission for having, for keeping that open mind and considering this, because I think it's so critical to the future of the county, and all of us just want to make sure we get it right first time.
I agree with you, Lauren.
Okay, well, thank you very much for showing up this morning, giving us a, a little bit of your ideas and thoughts, um, it's deeply appreciated, and we're looking forward to the first.
Thanks, commissioners.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it.
Well, it's information, they already had a booth for Bridge Day, I got a text.
Yes.
Okay, now, exciting news.
You must, huh, must be, because everybody's here.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is really a dream come true, having a full house, you know? I'd like to welcome, um, State Treasurer Raleigh Moore, who has a presentation for us.
Yeah, dude, go bearing gifts, no extensions. So, first of all. Thank you all for everything that you're doing, I mean, county commission, I'm from Jefferson County, but, I mean, it is, it's a tough job, and it's such an important job, but you see what's going on here in Fayette County, the designation of our new national park, I mean, this is a county that's obviously on the rise, in the state of West Virginia, there are exciting things happening with Fayette, and, uh, we just have a little something here that we'd like to, uh, give back to you all to help contribute to that, so I have a unclaimed property check. Uh, for Fayette County, which were, uh, checks that were gone stale, not previously cashed, we run into these a lot, um, but not typically this size, so, in any event, if y'all want to come down, I will give you the check. Now, this one you can't cash, but I got one that you can.
That would go to our county administrator.
Stick that there. Oh, come on down. All right. Oh, yeah. Okay. My left?
Yeah, your left.
Okay. All right. So for the Fayette County Commission, we are going to issue them a check of just over $235,000 to be returned back. That's one of our bigger ones that we've been doing this year. And we're excited to be able to get this money back to the county. And we're excited to see what to do with it, all these pretty things going on in Fayette. Congratulations, everybody. More excited for us. Yeah.
It's our understanding, some of these are already kind of pre-tagged for certain things.
Some, yeah. And uh, oh yeah, I don't want to forget this. Here's a real check. Uh, what do I give that to? Okay, let me, this burned a hole in my pocket, so. Let me get that back to you all, but uh, thank you so very much and uh, what is the good news? Really is tremendous the history here though in Fayette. I was, and I'm sure everyone has seen this, but it's portraits that they have of individuals of historic significance from Fayette County. It's really quite something. Um, you know, you've got Captain James Van Pelt there, the navigator on the aircraft that dropped an atomic weapon on the Saki. You've got Admiral Lopez and it's just a two governors, a senator. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable the type of people that have come out of Fayette County. It's truly tremendous and uh, exciting to see that history build even further to the future. Exciting times.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Thanks. All right. There we go. Done that job, I just did this. Okay.
I don't start with Anthony and Anthony told her to get him like.
Can you reject that number, it says cannot cross one?
But that's, I think it is just over 10%. Actually going to be able to use for general purposes, yeah, the rest is emergency services.
How did this help the emergency services?
Well, they are, yes, we did just hire a contractor um, to evaluate and assess how a monster to help us make some improvements there. We'd like to get the dispatcher phrases. Um, we would like to hire more dispatchers, so um, ships aren't included. And um, there are all the equipment upgrades and then I'm not sure whether we can allocate it to four towers. Been looking at our cell towers and recovery areas, so our law enforcement have access to recovery areas.
I think we're on, I guess the other is something. Is there anything else you guys need to add?
No, she said.
Okay. I can pick yourself a number and I can write it and make sure it's okay with that.
Jerry, can you? I'm passing.
Yes.
I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah. Yes. Um, while we're doing this break, I will give you the breakdown of where the check is going. We're not putting that money into our pockets or for the county. Two hundred and eight, one ninety-nine point five nine goes to the 911 fees. Twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars goes to reimbursement for community corrections grants. So that money is already spoken for. So I don't want to. Oh, a doll.
Yeah, right here.
Oh, I didn't realize the community correction, so I gave her.
One dollar. We get one dollar for the county.
You should have corrected me then.
Woo-hoo. That's the point you really should say.
I thought that community corrections money was general.
So that's great news. All right, we're taking another little break here.
I can talk back?
Yes.
Okay, so we're a little behind, but we'll make up some time as we go. Cannon, you want to go ahead and?
Yeah.
Give us an update and you can turn that microphone around there. You should know a little bit about this system.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's the guys that work in my crew that know more about it.
I think it's catching it.
Yeah, okay, well, my name is Cannon, one of our four, some of the global science and technologies. We've, we've been working, you know, we presented a proposal for a website. About what our plan for websites for counties was all about, just so you know, I have to tell you. We've been work, our company GST, we're working for county council houses for about five years. And, you know, we do the best we can to try to meet the needs in technology if we can. And for a long time, we just don't get it answered for counties that need a website or are interested in a website. But last, well, I think 2019, when the legislation was passed, the county was mandated to have an updated website to contain, you know, a lot of information. We felt that, you know, we had seen a lot of counties that, you know, we came to the site that they did have and kind of fallen behind and it wasn't maintained. And we've been around for a long time and we, we try to be as responsive and, you know, when a county needs something, we step up and are there to take care of it. And so what I did is I brought in the services with web designer to GST. And she's actually in the meeting right now. She's, you know, available to answer any questions that you might have. But I will tell you this, when we, when we got into this, years ago, a website was something that most of the elected officials in the counties, it was difficult to get a consensus to move forward with a website. And we just thought, well, we're going to stand back until it looks like everyone is in agreement. It's very necessary. And when we did this, what we wanted to do is make an offer available that was very, very affordable. To get design and also on a regular basis. So if you had somebody from there to develop something, you'd scratch, you're going to have to work with county government. And we've been working in every office in county government for many, many years. So any of the services that need to be provided on your website, whether it be the sheriff's office, the assessor's office, county clerk's office, etc. We've been working with those offices and with those vendors for many, many years. And we have already been making those, those services available. So with that, you know, we, we, we worked with Western County as a pilot to build a frame, a framework, and you're saying it right now. And this was their design. Your design isn't necessarily look exactly like this. This is what they were most comfortable with after we presented options. So you, you'll have the flexibility to, to change the look and feel. What we wanted to do is just give the navigation options that would make it the easiest it could possibly be for the public to use your site and to be able to accomplish the services that they were looking to accomplish with the county. So it's not perfect, but I can tell you this, we're going to continue to modify the same way we do everything else with the technology. To continue to make it more and more user friendly as, you know, the needs of the counties change or technology or services change. So with that, I know that I haven't met with you all and we wanted to make ourselves available questions that you have.
One thing I was going to have Amy do is go through the bars there just to let me look at it, just see what, how the bars are set up. Y'all with the, we want to have a good, good example.
So that's just going to take me to that, that shows the different things. I guess that's for.
On a tax map, could you have another map also if you wanted to, like, I'm just asking for that because a recreational map? Could you have it more, okay.
Oh, yeah.
A development map.
They can put a link toward any.
Okay, okay.
There's their county directory, which we just have kind of a PDF.
Now, okay.
Sorry, did you want me to get back to that?
No.
And then the how do I?
Yeah, that's the one I want to say.
Oh, sorry, I missed that one. Sorry.
Yeah, so that's probably my favorite one because that's probably the bulk of the questions we get.
And every county might be different. It's all going to depend on what you all get, you know, asked the most. When somebody wants to visit and do business with the county. You know, we try to make that the first, because a lot of people, I always say this, I think you know this, but a lot of people don't really know sometimes what office they need to go to in order to accomplish something. They need, but if you tell them if it's a marriage certificate, you're not telling them they have to go to the county clerk's office. You just, it'll take it there. It kind of takes that, takes care of it.
Amy, will you scroll to county offices again real quick? Okay, that's all what I want to see. Thanks.
You went off of it.
Oh, did, was she done still looking?
No, I'm done. Okay. No, I was done. She did.
Okay. Give me the other one to Marion or?
Yeah, if you've got another county, just for the.
Well, the, well, what we did in Marion, I just wanted to show you, this is more for the distant design. But yeah, you'll try to scroll on things.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you can see this one, this is for their number one center. So, but I just wanted to show you that your look and feel that the public sees first can be different. This just happens to be one that's, you know, we're just making the final, you know, changes to end before it's going to end up, goes live. But, and we, we have a few other counties that we are under contract for, but we're just in the early stages of developing the sites.
The second. Oh, it's a basic page. Okay. So they, you've got that embedded, embedded. And you can do that kind of thing. I, yesterday I put our YouTube videos, I embedded that on our website, our current website. We can deal with you that kind of thing.
Yeah, just about anything that you see on a website, you're going to be able to do. But yeah, every county is going to have, you know, wants. And there isn't anything, until you really get into like, like the back development, you know, where it's necessary. You know, and, you know, anything that you need to have done, we're going to sit down and work with you to, you know, to accomplish that. What this is, is this is the basic information and links to all of the services. So the public has a way to do business in any way that the county has available to do it electronically.
Okay, Cannon, I have a couple of questions. The website development 2950 is just going to be a one-time shot deal?
One time.
Okay. And then the 1950, of course, it's going to fluctuate with the market for the software and maintenance.
Yeah, that's actually just the annual maintenance, the support maintenance, which is the coordination that any additions that you have to the site, anything we do, you know, just to keep the current with, you know.
So it's not contact updating or content updating, it's just for main, maintaining it or is it, does that include content?
Hosting, the forehost.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do all the hosting and the other thing that we do, and it, I think it's on the, the, the the proposal, you know, you all have websites, you all have email addresses with wb.gov. So, but anything that's necessary, you know, with any coordination, anything involving the main email address.
Actually opted not to have a wb.gov because it's so cumbersome.
If you want to change, then we'll work.
I got a message back from them recently, so we're in the, in the works.
On the domain?
Yes.
Okay, sweet.
Yeah.
But what is it, like, county.gov?
They, kind of wb.gov.
Yeah, so the, so y'all will manage.
Oh, yeah, anything that, that you need to have done for incorporating email addresses or anything that's necessary on that. We've been here for all that. Because the county, we already have a, a contract with the county for high deep support. So there won't be a gap. Anything needs to be done, there's no, oh, that wasn't included. We're, we're going to be here to, you know, facilitate whatever you need within the county needs.
I just, I guess just update new information. Does it cost anymore? I mean, I guess it doesn't, right?
No. No, you.
Just making sure.
And then, but a lot of things, I think we want to give, whether it's Ruthie or Amy, whoever needs the ability to.
Access.
To get in and do routine things.
Minutes and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay.
Ideally, each elected official would have somebody that would be able to walk in and update, pay state numbers. Yeah.
Right.
Know about.
That's how it originally started, but it wasn't instituted.
I don't know whether any of these other counties do it, but we, we, our meetings are recorded now. So putting our, our meetings on the website is.
They're YouTube, they're on YouTube. So just a link to YouTube.
You just link them, you just link them to it, correct?
YouTube channel. Yeah.
Okay, that's, okay, just making sure.
Fortunately, that's housed, like, space-wise, it's already housed on YouTube. So we had, just like Facebook, all we have to do is put a link to it. And then it all.
Cool.
Update.
Any questions?
Um. Questions about this?
Yeah.
Not right now. I'm not ready to vote on it right now, though, on whether to include this. I'm going to have a discussion.
Okay.
So we can go into executive session or we can just put it on another agenda. I don't care.
Have you had a chance to look at this, Anthony? The GST contract? Okay. All right, so you want to go into executive session and discuss it?
I want to just at least discuss it, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I moved that we go into executive session.
A second. Okay, the time is 10 after 11, going, or nine after 11, go into executive session and we'll be back as soon as possible.
Oh! Hand down.
Yeah. Okay. We have, uh, come out of executive session at 25 after 11. And.
Well, a couple of things I wanted to clarify. One is, we had had a previous presentation from another company about the website, but it turns out that presentation was limited to just the commission and not for the entire county government. So that was one thing I wanted to clarify, and the other thing I wanted to clarify is that I had an understanding a few weeks ago that we had had some issues with GST. But I found out that it was not GST, that it was in fact a subcontractor, somebody else you worked with that, with whom we had the issues. They were just blaming you, and we were able to clarify it, and it was someone else. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't having, you know, support issues. And I wanted to make sure that, how, I want to try to distinguish this from the other proposal we had, so we could make a fair comparison. So that, that was what I wanted to discuss with them, but I didn't want to discuss any problems with your company on the record, if, if it was indeed your company. So we did that, and having done that, I'm satisfied that this is a very good proposal. It's going to provide us a much-needed start to getting our information to the public and updating what is now a really rudimentary, embarrassing website into something good. One thing that we're very concerned about is, you know, is, since I'm a lawyer and got the prosecutor in there with us, when we issue these email accounts, what we'd like to do is, if you guys have any proposals on policy, you know, we want to lock down certain capabilities, of course, social media and things like that, except for the elected officials can designate people in their offices, because some of them do have mission required need to access some of that stuff. And I understand why he has a background in cybersecurity or something, so then you know that, you know, if, if there's really sensitive information in the office, we might want to do a standalone, if there's something where they can get on and not have access to a full network. But, um, the other thing is with our email, because we get a lot of Freedom of Information Act requests, and that's been a problem in county governments, of course, we have Gmail accounts and Hotmail and everything else right now. We're going to make it a requirement for county employees to have these, and we want to have a set signature line format for everybody. So when we set up the account, we've asked that you set up the signature line for them. So that way it's consistent with everything, and we can find information and archive when accounts get closed and things, so we can make sure that for a certain amount of time anyway, we can retain that information in case it gets, in case we get Freedom of Information Act requests for it. So we just want to make sure that we're in compliance, but those are the things that I would just let's prepare you that, you know, we're going to ask as we set up email accounts and things to do. But that said, I, I moved that we accept this proposal and get these folks started on bringing us into this century.
A second. Okay, I am not going to highlight everything she said. However, we do have a motion in the second, all those in favor of the GST website?
Hi.
Aye.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. I did have to, I said, uh.
Okay.
So there's two of them?
Yeah.
And I, I mentioned it before I came down, I won't take that too much time, but, um, a few months ago, I'll, I'll introduce you, this is William, Willie Parker, and actually his son is the primary support here. But I met Willie probably close to 20 years ago, he was the county administrator for Upshur County, and he has been the county administrator for Harrison County for the last. Yeah, so anyway, when he, he's no longer working with Harrison County, but I asked Andy to talk to his dad, see if he would be interested in working as a subcontractor under our company to provide county administration services, because I knew we've asked you a lot about things that we run into. But I know, I know a lot of counties. Have to talk to Willie about support. What we're doing is we're really, I mean, if you're interested, we'd like to give you a proposal to contract him if a need arises. He's, he's got 30, about 30 years. 30 years with county government and 15 years prior to that in private industry.
For, for what, what would the scope of his?
Well, it would, he has probably done as much in terms of policy, procedure, employment, procurement, you know, everything the county administration covers.
So to help us author procedures where we don't have them, or help us update our procedures, the things where our county administrator is actually implementing them and managing everybody to help her maybe.
Or if.
Whatever she thinks she needs.
If it's a matter of resources.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm implying right now, because she does everything. She's our CFO and our COO and CDO. Yeah, so you know, you have a, you know, we're, we're very fortunate to have somebody with an MBA and accounting degrees, you know, and HR background to help us, but we do have a lot of policy things that I think need to be updated, and so it's good to know that's out there. So, you know, we'd be happy to have, and are you talking about like on a, almost like a retainer kind of thing, or like, you know, we just, if she has, like we do with our lawyers, if she, we have a project, we would let you know about the project?
Yeah, it's, if you want to do it on an as needed hourly basis, or if you wanted. Yeah, it's if you want to do it on an as needed hourly basis or if you wanted a retainer to where if there was unlimited access, we would just talk about what all of you would need.
Okay.
Propose it that way.
What counties do you contract with right now?
Well, we just started this. You're only the second county. We just sent, we just gave a proposal to West Virginia. And you were the second county.
Okay.
I would encourage you just to leave your contact information with Ruth, our county administrator, and, and let her and Amy, our executive assistant, to figure out what, what we might need in that capacity because they have been cleaning house and getting rid of a lot of our old documentation and things. And there may be things, I mean, I know we're working on an HR policy because we set up a wage and benefits review board and we're trying to get started on standardizing salaries and, you know, bonuses and all kinds of things. So that may be an area where we could use help. We're updating our employee guide, guide and things like that, our handbook.
There's just a small pamphlet that outlines some of the services, then a sample of some of them.
I'm giving my copy to Ruth. Yeah.
Oh, I've got copy.
Okay.
You know, I looked.
One thing I learned in the ministry, always bring enough down.
Well, I looked up a little while ago and I said, I knew Andy was sick, but my goodness.
You can't help yourself. You cannot help yourself. What is the time, what would the timeline be on getting a website up and running now that we've got the domain?
Uh, it's only, we can get it, we can do it pretty quickly. I would say within, you know, six to eight weeks maximum. I just don't know what all you might want that would take any more time. That would be the longest. We'll work as quickly as possible to get it done. You have a deadline. If there's something that, a date that you, you really want it, I don't think it's going to, because where we are is we've, we've been going through this exercise already. So as long as we get your information, we can get it together pretty quick.
Well, there's a lot on the current website that can be migrated as well. Okay.
All right.
No questions. So can we, when we do the agenda item later at the end of the meeting, can we figure out what date we want to put them on to come? Maybe have a work, maybe workshop or an agenda or do something so we can work with them, let them know what we want on it. Because I know he's done a lot of work on it already and, okay. So just make a note. All right. We will reach back out to you and we'll try to get together with you on some, you might want to identify who you're going to have working on it. Make sure we're ready to go.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Tell, tell Andy, yes, we said hello.
He's doing along well. He's had, of course, a couple of back surgeries, but he's progressing. So he's.
That's good.
Appreciate you.
We tried to get him to move in here.
Yeah. We've got a kitchen downstairs and everything.
He's my sauce if you're talking this long.
Thank you very much. All right. The eleven o'clock transit service for the Valley area. I told you guys about it earlier, like two, three months ago. Yeah. And what's happened is the towns of Montgomery, Smithers, Golly Bridge and Anstead have gone together and pooled money, which was like fifteen hundred dollars per city or town. And if we could give six thousand dollars to match it, that would be good, which is a whole lot less than what we give in RTA.
I know when you first talked about this, if my memory is correct, you talked about fifteen thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Uh, no. I said it would be less than ten.
Okay. I thought you said fifteen. What I'm saying is six thousand is a lot less than fifteen.
Yeah.
Are you talking about six a month, six thousand a month?
No. Six thousand for the year, for the year.
For the, for the year?
Yeah.
To, to be able to extend service to all of these areas from the plateau? And how are the routes going to run? I mean, how are they going to look?
It's going to come out of Somersville and down into the valley and they'll run up to Anstead.
Down thirty nine, down thirty, oh, they're not, down thirty nine for Somersville?
I'd like to see the route.
Yeah.
I would like to see that.
I'd like to see the route to see and how often they're going to go on that route.
Well, we're only discussing it today because our funds are tight until maybe October.
I'd like, I'd like to see the route and how often they're going to.
I'll get the routes and they're going to work with NRTA to meet people at the Walmart Shopping Center in case they need to go on to Beckley. They can also go into Somersville and then up into Morgantown if need be. Or they can get NRT and in Montgomery and go on to Charleston or Huntington. So it, it's really going to help connect our area and I, for one, consider a really good win for win for us.
Do they have the routes figured out yet?
Yeah, they have the routes. I've just got to get a copy of it. I've, I've been calling a guy and he's been calling me. We've been missing each other.
Their routes would be important.
Suppose routes.
Cemented in here.
Okay. So that was that. We'll put it on a later meeting agenda so that we can approve it, but I wanted to give you guys some of that data. Okay. So we're trying to play catch up. What do you guys hear for?
We're listening to John Stumpf, who's turning on right now. You guys know him. Jane, I'm Patrick Serratt, the new general manager over at the summit. So.
Oh, yeah. We've heard about you.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you too. No, no, no. It's, it's good. I've heard very good things. I've been trying to convince because we've, we've been in adversarial relationship with the Boy Scouts for many years and I, I feel like that can change now with some of the new administration up there. And I'm hearing from people who've met with you guys already that it, it can change. So that's what we're hoping to do.
We're not making a good impression by, oh, thank you. This is John right here. Yes, there we go. Perfect.
How's the planning for the event?
I'll slide right over here. That's it. It's going great. We've got, not got on wood here, Spartan Race, which everything's filled up around this neck of the woods this, this weekend for some of the new health situations. We're a little concerned about that. And then the big event is September tenth through the twelfth. So right now it looks pretty good. Got a bunch of local food trucks and exhibitors that looks, looks pretty positive for us. The DNR West Virginia DNR days will be part of that. Got a Jeep's and Rosie's and that's a part of that. And should be good. The GNCC race, which we've had there before. So it looks pretty good.
Good.
Good. Good, John. How are you?
Great. Thanks. Great. I'll let John take over, but we're here and you know Shane, if there's questions that are unrelated, we have to talk. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
We haven't met yet. John Stumpf, pleasure.
Harlan here has called me. I was out of, out of town about this today on your behalf.
Yeah. Carl's a good man. I used to serve him on the board. It's not false BSA going.
John, could you provide one to our prosecuting attorney right there, please?
So this is the same thing that I had sent previously. Five to you packets. Essentially, the Boy Scouts have requested or are requesting that the county commission, Bay County, modify a certain bond, terms and provisions of bonds that are presently outstanding to finance some of the construction at the. Going back to twenty-ten and twenty-twelve, county commission issued a total of about two hundred seventy-five million dollars for bonds. Three different series. It was a twenty-ten A, a twenty-ten B and a twenty-twelve series. The proceeds of which were used to finance, again, some of the improvements that the Sun effect. So the dollar value of what's been installed, that I know at the time, two hundred seventy-five million is a fairly small percentage. I mean, I would say it was anticipated. So those monies were both bought purchased by JP Morgan Chase. And most importantly, from the county commission's perspective, there is, there is no liability of the county commission whatsoever on these bonds. Okay. So the question becomes why, why utilize the county commission? Why go through this process and not just do a bank? The reason is, by going to the county commission, any not-for-profit utilizing West Virginia thirteen dash two C can take advantage of federal tax exemption of bonds, which means you get a lower rate of interest. So any not-for-profit that approached the county commission or for that matter, Fayetteville or Oakdale, could say, could we go through you as a conduit to issue the bonds? That gives that not-for-profit a lower rate of interest because the people purchased, in case of scouts, JP Morgan Chase, purchasing the bonds will give a lower rate of interest because they're not paying tax on the bond issued itself. And on what was two hundred seventy-five million dollars, you can save a percentage point through money. So that's why they asked the county commission to issue those bonds. Again, the county commission doesn't guarantee them. If the, the era of West Virginia and some of the reserves went bankrupt, the county commission has no obligation whatsoever. It wouldn't impact county's ability to go out and borrow money. These are recognized in the marketplace. A large hospital system is doing this all the time. Everybody from CMC to the Wexner facility at OSU. They, they do this, this is very common for not-for-profit organizations. So this process for amending the bonds, because the county commission is involved, requires the county commission's approval. The terms that are being revised are still somewhat under negotiation. Primarily, it existed extending the term of the bonds to give scouts a longer period of time to repay them. I think the interest rate is getting adjusted and not as explicit for you of the things scouts provide me that show what the changes were.
That was my most important part when I read this, is the changes and changes prior to seven days before you advertise, you know, ASAP. And the other one says borrower and arrow. When I read this, and I think you identified the other borrower. You said, you said somebody else in arrow.
Arrow. Yes.
Well, who, who is the other borrower? It says borrower and arrow.
It was Summit Bank. Is that what he said?
Yeah.
I know he said, okay.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
I was wondering, I didn't see that defined in this right here as who the other one is. So you said Summit?
Yes, it's, well, it's, it's arrow is primarily borrower, but arrow is backed by the BSA.
Okay, that, okay, that wasn't defined in here because I was looking for it when I looked over this and it didn't, but I just wanted to know who it was.
Sure.
Okay.
The process requires three steps by the county commission. The first is a public hearing. This is an internal review, so it's required. That allows any member of the public to come and ask questions about the project. They can support the project, they can object to the project, whatever they want to do. Right? And that's true again for any non-county organization. This isn't specific to the scout. And then the second step, which we can now move from September the fifteenth. I, I've never dealt. I'm not involved in any way, shape or form with bankruptcy proceedings. Though as bond counsel for the original bonds, I get filings, all of it. I have stacks of this stuff.
Lucky you. Yeah, that's how my email is.
Stacks of this stuff in my office. But it, none of it impacts the count at all. So the bankruptcy court late Friday, after I sent this, changed the schedule. So now we're looking at a meeting in October, either the sixth or the twenty-seventh, unchanged meeting dates, for consideration of the resolutions. Okay. So the Tupper hearing is really just an opportunity for the public to show up and say, we've got concerns about the project, we support the project, whatever the case might be. The resolutions, and there would be one for the twenty-ten bonds and one for the twenty-twelve bonds, will simply, those will provide for the amendments. And I can have a list of what's proposed right now.
Yeah, like, yeah.
And certainly I can get that to you just.
Because I, I don't think this is only about the interest rate.
No, no, it's not. No, the term is the big issue. But there are also some financial covenants that are in there. And it's in the, it's in the plan of reorganization that's been filed with the, with the bankruptcy board.
That's what's driving it?
Yes.
Okay, John, the bottom of page two. The hearing will be on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah.
September the fifteenth.
Yes, sir. And that nine AM is just a time that I chose. This, that's historically when the county commission has done these types of things. A lot of different time. Absolutely fine. Doesn't matter. Us, we just have to make sure it goes in the paper for us.
Ruth, can you get us a time for that, please?
Yeah, Andy, well, I have a question. So when we did the, in the health department, we had to sign that letter saying the county hadn't issued bonds or something so they could be covered under a taxes. And is this not the same thing?
It's not because of the five one. So you're looking at bank qualification, the health department is what I saw. I read some of your minutes. I, I saw that that came up. So a bank, I'm assuming, has asked you for a letter saying.
Yes. So it's not the same.
Right. It is not the same.
That's a good question.
This is not tied to that five million dollars.
Because this is a five oh one C three.
Yes, sir.
So this two hundred, I'm just curious, this two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, two hundred seventy-five million, excuse me. Excuse me, I, I need to step my game up.
Twenty dollars.
Instead of hot dogs, we're talking something else. We was talking hot dogs would be fifty cent.
It used to be.
Yeah. Is that, is that money already been spent?
Yes, it has. And a substantial portion of the bonds have been paid now.
Okay, because I've looked at the, I've looked at financial statements from the summit and there's a large sum of money still in the, in the financial statements, the reason I was asking.
You mean proceeds? Like money is to be spent?
Yes, whether the capital.
Right. No, these dollars have been spent.
Okay.
Had to be. They had to be spent within a three to five year timeframe.
Okay. Yeah. And I think last year, year before last, is the financials that I, that I looked at, there's, there's a substantial amount of money in there. So I was just, I was just curious.
I want to go back and say two thousand sixteen, it completed everything on this, on the two hundred seventy-five million?
That's, I mean, it would be in that, that time.
Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, right in there.
Yes, sir. That would be, that would be in this. And, and just so we're clear, this resolution here today, all this does is allow us to schedule the hearing.
Yeah.
Essentially authorize me to put the notice of hearing in the papers and take care of those things when we have the commission. You're not making any decision here regarding the amendments, what the cases, joining the information to do it, obviously, commissioner. And, and that's not the expectation here at all.
Well, when will the public get to see that information? The day of the hearing?
Um, we can have substantially final versions, but we can advance. I mean, these documents are being modified as it, right now.
How many, how many pages are we talking about in these documents?
Hundreds.
Yeah.
Well, see, I don't think it's, that, that's the only thing bothers me about this is public to look through documents like that.
Now, we could provide it to you red line.
Okay. I think you're outlining the changes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, you just show where the changes are or we can do.
Now, that would be great.
Yeah, that, I mean, you're right. That makes a lot more sense. But they are voluminous. And, and the reality is a lot of the changes are dates. You know, you, you know what I'm saying? I mean, a lot of the changes we're making here are simply dating, redating the loan and purchase agreement from twenty, the last amendment of twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. So there's going to be a lot of changes. Now, if you would like, we could put together the form of resolution that you all are going to consider, which would have in it the modifications to the term.
The summary of the changes. And that way, the original agreement we could post along with the summary would probably be a better way.
Yeah.
To do it.
By far.
Yeah.
Would be for me.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure if we're talking about a public hearing, that the people are not in the dark on this because I knew it was going to be a lot.
Right.
And anything to make it easier for the public and then the commission too. I mean, Ms. Taylor's a lawyer, but I've been through stuff like this before.
Sure.
I know it was going to be cumbersome. I didn't want it seven days prior.
Right. Understand. And I think that the, the actual lot of the. Right, understand. And I think that the, the actual lot of the actions of the terms, because. You know, when you extend the term, what happens is, is it modifies a whole bunch of documents.
Right.
The modification is exactly the same thing. It's the same modification. We extend the term ten years, whatever the, the provision becomes. And what will happen then is that will be reflected in the supplemental resolution and authorize that change to subsequent documents. So the supplemental resolution for each series will summarize, as Mr. said, the, the changes that are going to be made.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Okay, and that document will be less than twenty pages.
Okay.
All right, well, given that I moved that we, um, approve the request to advertise for our public meeting on the fifteenth at nine A M.
A second. Okay, we have a motion in the second to advertise for a public hearing on, uh, for September the fifteenth, which will be a Wednesday, not a Friday?
Yes, it will be. I'll make that change to the resolution.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, what I would suggest is.
Strike through it.
Signature pages and I'll just substitute the page if that's okay.
That's fine.
And I can send you a, a substitute page. Yeah, I guess.
You got one.
She comes prepared.
Try to.
So somebody, she shows out.
You mean we need notary? What do you, so we need?
She has decided to.
County clerk. That's okay. It doesn't have to be signed today. I mean, we can get it signed. I can leave these with you if you don't mind and then you give them sign and scan one to.
How long was she out?
Until it's after this, the sixth, the she can have like a six.
Can we stay here? You know, that's her, but. Yeah, I can call her, text her.
Yeah, she probably knew this was going to come up.
Really, if you have an assistant clerk, assistant county clerk.
Okay. John.
And that's, yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you update my colleagues here on the issues that we discussed yesterday on Wolf Creek Park?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, and I have copies of those, um, grants that we.
Wolf Creek Park up on me with a hammer.
It's, uh.
Well, there's no action. No action. He just. John asked me some questions about Wolf Creek Park and the tip district is there.
Oh, the tip.
Right, and the, the issue, upward issues, and none of it's insurmountable. I mean, I certainly understand why you all are looking for the opportunity to get a private investor to take that over. Um, certainly, I think every government would like for the private sector to do these sorts of things. However, um. Two issues. First of all, I, I wasn't involved with the original. I wasn't involved with the original financing for the. Was the initial work part. But my recollection, my limited knowledge is there were a number of grants that were involved. Depending upon, I don't think depending upon where those grants, U S E D A. Depending upon where those grants came from. Um, the source, you know, U S E D A here. You, they may require a repayment. I doubt it. Given that E D A, if, you know, you're building, you know, thinking about this after our conversation. When you're building a park for the purpose of putting private companies in there, that was the idea. Now, if it's going to convert to residential, okay, that may be a different animal. I don't know.
I think we're looking at mixed use from what we, what we've determined that it's not ideal for the original plan. That so there may, they may be able to put some companies out there, but no major industrial.
Autography doesn't.
Right.
I mean, you. So you just have to talk to, and the person that's Department of Commerce, who does E D A you can talk to. Her name's Tracy Rowland. I don't know if you can met her and I can send you all of her contact info. You have it? Yeah, she's, yeah, you would, yeah. She's super. She's great to work with. Um, she probably won't know the answer off the top of her head, which is fine, but she could take it to the Philadelphia office. This won't be something that you've ever dealt with before, okay? I mean, there's a, they'll need some, some. Some, they'll have some information.
So what, there, there was some. From what I understand, when I, have you read the note? Have you read it?
The E D A note?
Yeah, I've looked through it, but I'm trying to go by memory from twenty nineteen. Uh, there were some funds that was used, some state funds. Uh, you mentioned it, I think it was called something, it was like one point.
Department of Transportation?
No, it wasn't Department of Transportation, it was something, I think it was one point one million dollars that was used. It was, that was supposed to be used just for, um. Industrial parks, you know, parks.
There's one more grant agreement that I don't have in there from the state. I'm still trying to pick up the agreement.
Well, I've got some stuff on my website.
It's all set in block grant.
The only thing I, I remember, the rest of the money was, was, was borrowed from the housing.
Sidon Fund.
Housing Development Fund.
Yes.
And the only outstanding debt, that from what I understand, is the, the, uh, housing fund.
That was, that was my understanding. I mean, just again, anecdotally, I never was involved in it.
And just, just out of memory, because I, I, I could probably pull the stuff up on my site, but I mean, it's just by memory. So there's not really, and, and, and you're saying, but in changing it from industrial or, or being a park. Uh, to residential would be a problem.
Well, I'm not saying it is a problem. I'm saying it could be.
Okay.
You will want to know what grant agencies that.
Well, the county commission, I don't believe has the right to change that. I think that the people that own the property. Or the organization, the government entity that owns the property is U R A.
Correct.
The county commission really doesn't have anything to do with it other than the tip. Well, the, the tip is still used out at the Wolf Creek Park.
Right, it's limited to Wolf Creek Park.
It's limited to.
But the county commission does control the use of funds out of the tip. You're right, but it is limited to Wolf Creek Park.
Yeah.
And I will say that if that became, if the U R A decided to sell the park. And they wanted to, and it was, and the developer wanted to convert it to residential. That may create a situation where you would need to, um, where the tip might, might need to be dissolved.
Yeah, well, I think I even missed that.
I think that's, we've talked about that.
In fact, I talked to you about that in twenty nineteen, when I first brought you in here about the tip. I said, can it be dissolved? And you said, anytime the commission wants it to be dissolved, it can be dissolved.
Right, so long as there's no bonds outstanding secured by the tip, you can dissolve.
And there's no bonds outstanding that is all is, yeah.
As you go.
As you go, right.
Exactly. So, I, I think really all you need to do is, is this other grant in the state, you may just call the state and ask them. Um, I don't remember who, like, I don't know who your point first and most on this, but industrial access roads, Department of Transportation. You know, U S E D A, I'll get you, or you go places and contact info. Then whatever the other grant is, determine. How that, you know, where, where that fits in and that'll give you an eye, that'll tell you whether those have to be repaid or not. Each grant repayment is coming up in various, I typically see them when utilities are required. Like, that's what's holding the page A, water required from the water company. They can't determine, they don't have a determination that. Uh, whether or not, and, and what amount, U S D A grants are going to have to be repaid. That's what I am, I'm not working on it, but that's mine.
You know more about it than we do at this point. I haven't heard that yet.
Yeah, that's what's, that's what's holding me up. I was just talking to somebody.
So, are you, I'm making sure this is clear. The, the county commission really doesn't have anything to do with it, but because they've authorized a grant that the U R A is utilizing. It could cause a problem. Is that what you're saying? And, and well, no, it really depends upon, I mean, here I see the grants are given, at least in these two instances, are given to the.
Bay County Urban Resilience Authority. Brants are given to Bay County Urban Resilience Authority, which they both appear to be. Then it really doesn't create an issue for the county commission as far as repayment. But it, it is something that the U R A would have to look at. The county commission is going to encourage the U R A to, you know, take some kind of action, you know, you're not even a signature.
Nope, not even a signature.
To release these back grants.
But it is an encumbrance if the commission, um, did end up, um, in possession of the property and having to sell it ourselves, right?
Correct.
Well, we wouldn't, we don't, we, I don't think we can have possession unless, unless we decide to take possession.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we decide, yes, that's what I mean, like.
Yeah, but that would be taken care of, I believe, in the process. If we was going to, we would want something done a certain way before we took possession.
That's right. Just like any other purchase.
Right.
I mean, you, before the U R A could transfer it, they would have to understand what the impact will be on these grants. One, and number two, maybe, maybe affirm that. Covenant with you all, the county commission has heard no. But, but between the U R A and the county commission, that's. That would be, that's one issue. If you're transferring to private development, it's, you know, in many situations, that's another issue. Again, like Page and Gate, Page and Gate Water were being acquired by another public service district. You would have to have the consent of U S D A, but you wouldn't have to repay the grants. But since it's going to a private company, they have to repay the grants or at least some portion of them. And that, that is what I understand U S D A is trying to do.
They're negotiating a portion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying is they're waiting on the U S D A to develop. And of course, you've got to change the situation to U S D A this year, so they're.
Okay, well, thank you very much, John. Appreciate it. Do we have a time for him on the fifteenth, Ruth?
Our public hearing is due at ten, ten o'clock.
Unless you wanted it nine.
No.
No, let's do it at ten.
Okay.
Getting on through I six before in the morning is just. It's terrible.
Especially up around Huntington.
That's where I'm coming.
Is that where you are?
Yeah, I guess it's, you don't want to be here until seven. I have information for you, so this is.
Okay. All right, I will.
Okay, thank you all very much. We appreciate it. And if you can just scan one of those into me, but you can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, Gabe?
Who? He's striking up my cord. He shouldn't be in my cord.
Thanks for coming down.
I appreciate it.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
Well, he shouldn't be in my freezer. I can't remember. This has Crystal contacting. Okay.
Yeah, he's there. He's the new director. He's about home. Bill Garrett is the business director, that guy. And he's the new head.
All right, cool.
So you'll know that he came off the mountain for this, which is cool. I'm scheduled for something. But I haven't been to one, and since you're doing all the rallying, I didn't know if you want to put it on the agenda and get back on there. But I have not been to one and I feel horrible.
They meet once a month.
I know, and I missed it this time because I was a name.
Yeah, I just, I mean, there were several meetings that conflicted. And I had to tell them I either had to do it by phone or.
Okay.
And they'll let you do it by phone instead of in person.
Okay, so is that a no?
I don't care.
I was asking if you want to go back on the transit authority that, those meetings, because I haven't made one yet this year, like, if they're always scheduled at a time when I.
Well, transit and, um.
And the E, E E O M or something, whatever.
Transit and the roads, what's the, the reason for work?
Yeah. Yeah, what Amy said, yep.
Yeah. Well, I can, I can, I can go back on both of them if you want.
You want to?
I mean, I, I only thought I was on one at one time, then somebody set us on both of them. And then they might give me the time for the other one, but they're one, they're consecutive.
Yeah, they're consecutive, and then you get fed lunch.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can do that. We can, we can make a check.
Get on the agenda, okay.
All right, Gabe.
Yes.
Five seconds.
Oh, boy.
Say, sign this.
Yeah, we have a courthouse facilities improvement authority grant due on October one, twenty twenty-one. I don't, uh, have a firm idea from you all what you'd like to move forward with on that grant. I'm assuming that you want to move forward with that grant. I do have some ideas from Sheriff Ridley. Uh, actually, Tom, I think you brought up at one point the potential of renovating the jailhouse. Over here, I know that Amy and Ruth have been working on taking care of some of the letters that are stored in there. But I think you're somewhat hazardous considering, uh, the quantity of paper files over there.
It's a bunch.
So, uh, as we looked at the potential of renovating that, uh, I wanted to get a go-ahead. On that from you all before I started pulling together an application, which again is due, a hundred thousand dollar grant. Uh, max amount, the twenty percent match, so it could potentially, twenty percent match at least. I know that under the C F I A grant for twenty twenty, we ended up paying out a little bit more given the expenses with H V A C equipment. Uh, but that does wrap up the H V A C renovations over at the annex, so now I'm looking for some guidance on how to move forward with this next application.
What's your take?
I think, I mean, but the jail is not going away and right now it's wasted space.
Yes.
I mean, we're using it for storage and it's not even climate controlled, so a lot of the stuff that's stored is getting damaged, so.
We'll tell you it's a lot of space over to be utilized.
There really is, and the guys have been, they've been, they're making some progress. It's going to take a while because they just uncovered court dockets from the fifties. Yeah.
I mean, I mean, we can visually u- utilize it, whether it be D R C or probation, I think.
Yeah, it's going to be a long-term process, but I think, I mean. It's what, twen- potentially twenty thousand and we get whatever in return.
It's asset being wasted.
But that's going to be, so what would we use, the hundred or the, you know, the hundred four?
Excellent question. So, I, I would like to get Dan Snead over to do an assessment of the structure and figure out what's the highest priority. Probably roofs, windows, maybe H V A C over there as well.
I'm guessing there's probably not a lot we can do with that amount of money. That's why I was just wondering, like, is this going to be, we're going to.
Can we even do a cleanup with that?
Are we?
No cleanup.
No cleanup, okay.
The, the grant really is for life safety, building code compliance.
We probably do need to get roof and, you know, just because in climate, you know, to start, but that, that wouldn't only cover probably one.
Yeah, well, and it's going to be, like, it's not going to be like a one-year thing.
Wouldn't, so we would reapply every year, this is.
But it's been sitting there going downhill for years.
Yeah, it would have to be done in phases.
So we can talk about what I'll come before you with as far as applications. So we have accessibility, roof, structural, electrical, communications, cabling, exterior improvements, interior improvement, mechanical, windows and doors to new space.
So you're saying, you're saying Dan Snead, take Dan Snead over and let him assess it and see what needs to be done.
Set some priorities.
That document is something that I submit with the application showing that we did our due diligence. And that goes over where our estimates for the budget come from. We will still get bids on whatever we do specifically. But that will help line us out potentially for three, four phases worth of work that I'll have to update each year. But if we get that first initial analysis, get some input from the sheriff, that'll give us a game plan as to how we want to tackle this big project.
Do we have to pay him to do that?
I believe so.
Yeah, how much do we have to pay him, do you know?
It's probably a couple of thousand dollars on that, but I don't know.
Nominal, something you could go ahead and take care of, okay? Everybody's fine with that?
A wise decision.
Yeah, I agree. I move that we go ahead and, um, I mean, Ruth, it's within her authority to pay Dan Snead to do that. But I, I move that we move forward with this project.
I second. I'm all for it. Okay, we got a motion in the second to go ahead with the grant application. To start with renovation of the jail house. Jail block. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Good job.
All right.
Good presentation.
I will, I mean, I, I think it's.
I want to see too. I haven't been over there.
I'll tell you what, the building, there's a lot of room over there, could be a ton of room.
Yeah, we might use one offices.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of offices.
Yeah, right in the jail.
Well, I said we should just turn the jail cells into offices and put Anthony in one.
Let us see how it feels.
All right, we are up to Mr. Celebrator.
I'm not ready to address the land bank issue, so we can, we can post some of that. Second issue.
When you, when will you be ready, you think? Okay, I move that we postpone the land bank discussion to the September fifteenth meeting.
One second.
The second issue, matter of utmost importance, but I've extended a job offer to Caitlin Dorsey to work as a legal assistant, offered her thirty one thousand. She has an associate's degree in paralegal studies, I sent an email to you guys.
Yeah, I read everything, she looks like a good hire to be a good candidate.
She should at this point have the bachelor's.
Ashley was wondering where to find her, that was me when, on there, I was happy for you that you found such a good candidate.
Yeah, I was, she, she should have her bachelor's degree completed at this point, uh, in paralegal studies. And she's supposed to start Friday, uh, because of a resignation, because of a termination, we're down two support staff people. Health issues right now, we got two support staff out. But Caitlin, assuming the county commission approves her hire, she is supposed to start Friday, we did a criminal background check. She has no criminal history whatsoever.
I'm, I'm move that we approve.
My second.
Hiring.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the hire of Caitlin Dorsey for the prosecutor attorney's office, all those in favor?
Aye. Hey, Anthony, will you bring her to the next meeting, just introduce us to her?
Sure.
I'd like to start meeting all the new staffs, and I'll recognize them when I see them.
Yeah.
Yeah, do me a favor, send me the.
Reminder.
Oh, thank you, Amy. Sometimes you have to do it to me, I appreciate it. Yeah, he's, he's better about email than he is texts. Well, I've seen, I'm the opposite. Text, email, call.
What's her start date? What's her start date?
Friday.
Okay, because we meet the first, so you could bring her in.
All right. Ruth, we're on your stuff.
Pro forma, yeah. Does she have a good sense of humor? You should mess with her a little bit.
She seems like she does, but.
I'm sorry, that's what I do. You say, there was that one thing in your background that came. I do that, and then they kick ass. I hadn't, I thought that was dismissed, you know?
Okay, Ruth.
We have some orders to combine, divide, and segregate, any of those back.
I make a motion to approve the combine, divide, segregate, but just be unblown over.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the divide, combine, divide, or segregate a land, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Still doing pretty well, given the. That's what we call it in the military.
All right, the next thing on the list is the approval of the contract, contract for the H vac system, say, institute. And the annex is two hundred and nine thousand six hundred dollars. This is the one Dan Snead.
Yeah, that's one we've been working, yeah.
Yeah.
The cipher that makes all of them, by the way.
Yeah, so this should complete the H vac in the annex. Three, three original copies, you have to sign all three copies.
Yeah.
We'd already approved this, right, we just.
Yeah, this is just improving his recommendation.
Yeah.
And sign the contract so that we can get started.
I move, resign it.
My second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to assign the contracts uh, with Pennington Plumbing and Heating for the annex, all those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Ruth.
So, the next one is discussion, decision, review of a letter and invoice from Tom Rist and his relatives about the property encumbrances.
I'm guessing you got this resolved, did you?
Well, I, I mean, I need some guidance from the county commission, and I talked with Mr. Rist. Tom, Tom's complaint. Tom has been trying to get this resolved since. He's pretty much run out of patience. My opinion on his decision to retrograde reassess rent is that that's not valid. However, prospectively, moving forward, he certainly, at this juncture, would potentially be over. So essentially, um, and there was a, just so you guys remember, if you guys can see the survey, this triangle in blue is what our surveyor did, um, I sent that to Tom, Tom looked at it and rejected that as a proposal because it includes property that he had no intention of selling. He's only interested in selling that portion of land that is under the porch. I also talked with him about, um, also going back, and this, this is the Bay County Sheriff's Department Detective Bureau, this is the prosecutor's office. This parking over here is areas, at least on the sheriff's departments or the detective bureau. They've basically been coming out of the back door and walking over here. Um, they can go out the front door, take a long way around. Um, so it's simply up to the county commission whether or not you're going, you're going to have to have another survey done that includes only the area of the porch and the steps.
I see that, Anthony, while you're talking, I'm sorry. Because I mentioned something before, I'm going to mention again on this survey, go ahead.
Um, but basically, Tom's only willing to sell the area immediately under the porch and the steps, so we would have to have another survey done of just that area. I have no idea what was communicated to the surveyor that did this particular survey and why it was plotted that way.
Well, I mentioned to get the gentleman out there that's selling the property to us, Rist.
Well, he's in California.
Well, somebody put some stakes out there, what partial he's talking about, because I figured this would be a problem. Usually if I do something like this, or have something plotted,
He marked it around.
I marked the ground and say, this is where I want it, right here, and then if there's any discussion from here on out, we'll make a change. And, and, so I mean, that's what I recommended, and evidently, you say he's in California?
He is.
Yeah, but he could even do it over FaceTime.
He, he needs to, he, he need, in my opinion, you need to ask him how many feet from this point.
Well, I, I mean, Tom, like, he's been pretty clear to me, what he is willing, if you look on, look within the center of that triangle, you can see.
Just the porch.
And the steps.
So if they measure the porch, and I'm not, I'm not fussing with anybody, I'm just saying, from the edge of the building to the edge of the porch, straight across, all the way back and forth, he'll be happy with it. No, just the steps and just the porch, okay, I thought he was going to walk, but I read an email or something.
There could be a problem with the detectives walking across Tom's property.
I also, I also talked with Tom about that, because obviously, we've got county employees trespassing across his property. He said that he would be, you know, I suggested that he grant the county easement. His response to that was, rather than grant us an easement which would be permanent, uh, he suggested that we include it as part of the lease for the parking, and that he grant the county a license, which essentially gives the employees that work in that building a right to cross over the property, and it would be authorized so long as that lease to park back there.
As long as the parking lease was in effect.
And, and the reality of the situation is, is really, if we don't have that parking area, there's not going to be any reason for the county employees to walk back.
Right.
So we leased the property off him also?
Or we, or does the sheriff?
The sheriff does.
Sheriff does.
Sheriff's department does, but, but then also, I noticed something in his letter, and this was news to me. I mean, I knew there was a porch off of one of my assistant's offices, there's steps, but according to Tom's letter, the steps over there at my office are somehow or another approaching on his property as well. I mean, I, I don't know whether they are, whether they aren't.
Is there steps in line with this porch and steps to?
See, the, the porch and the steps over at the prosecutor's office are located in between, it's located somewhere in this area, it's in between the sheriff's department, detective bureau, and prosecutor's office. So I'm guessing the steps must barely approach back here.
So, so he owns this strip here?
No, he does not, but he owns this back here.
Oh, okay.
So, so when you, the, the stairs for the steps go back in this direction.
But I'm wondering if they go as far as this right here.
I don't remember, I, I mean, I'd never really paid attention.
So if he's talking about an easement, a walk easement, so is he talking about us?
He's talking about a license giving people the right to cross from here.
So where is he talking about selling, just from here to here?
He's talking about selling only the area around the porch and the steps.
So not this, not this?
Not this.
Wow, so do we need to have the surveyor also include the area under your step, your deck or steps?
Well, I'd like to take a look at it. Be perfectly candid with you, we don't use.
Right.
Porch, and we don't use the steps. Might be cheaper just to have the steps.
Destroyed.
Or redone so that there's a steeper pitch, and so that they come, I mean, I, I'd like to, Tom didn't even bring that up when we talked. So it's not necessarily a burning issue for him, but, but, um, or I shouldn't say it's not the primary issue for him, but I mean, clearly, we, we need to, we need to get this resolved, it's been dragging on for six years. Um, so we need, you know, as, as far as the detective bureau is concerned, I think we have two options, we either have another survey done and survey around the porch and the steps, or we remove the porch and the steps and be done.
So, Fridley actually said something about not paying to lease that parking lot in the future. So if he doesn't pay to lease that parking lot, then they no longer have the right to walk across that property to get on that porch, even if we did survey.
Well, that's a consideration Fridley will have to, you know.
But, but as a practical matter, if they're not leasing that parking lot, there's no, there's, there's not going to be any reason for somebody to. The reason they're walking out the back door and cutting through is it's the most direct path.
To the parking lot.
To the parking area. I mean, they could very easily walk out the front door, going across in front of the prosecutor's office, and go in behind to access that parking area without approaching on Mr. Rist's property, technically, it's endless wall properties. So basically, the county commission needs to decide if you want to have a survey done of that area around the porch, or if you want to tear the porch down, I don't know if there's any five bedroom plans.
There's no exit out of that back room. Can I say it, survey again?
Certainly.
Anthony, I should know, I should know this area. But is this a, is this a walkway through here?
It's grass.
It's grass, so.
I mean, you can walk through there, but it's not, it's not routinely used as a walk.
So what I'm asking is, if there has to be a, a issue with a is there a door over this, you don't know?
There isn't, that's the only exit out of that.
I believe the only exits out of this building are the fronts and then the back.
Yeah, so we need to keep that, and your porch or your steps was built because there wasn't an exit out of that room or that office if there was a fire in the hallway.
I kind of figured, I kind of figured that's why that was there.
Yeah.
Was to give a second fire exit if needed.
Correct.
Um, and again, I think we ought to, before we make any commitment on what to do there, I think, I mean, the steps could have very easily have been put on the other side of the porch, been heading down in the direction of East Maple Avenue, and we would have been on that property. For whatever reason, they were constructed so that they're heading to the back of the building. But I.
Can you get the sheriff over here, please?
But, I mean, that, the, the bigger issue is what to do about the detective bureau porch and step.
Well, if there's a way, that if there's a hallway that goes right here, in, in this grassy area, in this, I don't know this building that well. I mean, we could go out this side, and not even worry about the back door.
That would require constructing a door, and, and the other thing that Tom, I mean, this is, um, there's a basement there, so you're going to be, same with the prosecutor's office, you're going to be about one floor up, so you would, you would have to build a landing and then a seven steps down, but, but that would require putting, putting a door into that side of the building.
And that's their evidence room, or were they, it was supposed to be where they talk about murders and everything else, you had a nice table in there, and all the whiteboards around. Where were they, you know, where the proposed door would be going?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, and I understand, I mean, I'm not, like I said, I'm not fussing with anybody, but just the porch, I don't, you know, I thought it was from a line over here all the way across, and then I asked for a stake out here to go all the way across, but, but evidently, it was just the porch and steps.
The porch and the steps, and that's it.
And where did that communication mess up at?
That went to Larry, and then it was given to the second prosecutor that came in.
See, I just thought it was straight, I thought the conversation was straight across, I mean, maybe, maybe I missed something.
I mean, it's interesting because you're understanding what was supposed to be done, there's at least three versions of what was supposed to be done. Your understanding, Mr. Rist's understanding, and what the surveyor thought was supposed to be done, so clearly, there wasn't a detailed conversation about what the parties were willing to do, but, but I think what would make Mr. Rist happy, we could do a sales, we could do a sales contract, set a price, that would commit us to buying the property from him, and then obviously, the survey is going to be taking some time to complete, and then preparing the deed is, is never.
About all the property that he has there, or just that?
Just that part.
Just this part, the steps and the board.
Is the sheriff coming over?
When he gets back, he'll be up.
Well, let's move on, get a couple of these other.
Yeah, okay, but he said, just out of curiosity, has he said what he wanted just for that part?
It was.
In his letter, he said five hundred dollars and six hundred grand or something, I don't know, I, I'm guessing it'll be nominal.
He told me, Tom, and in, as much as I hate saying this, I don't remember how much, um, I think it would be better. But Tom, Tom, Mr. Rist also, there, he wants this from us. He's tired, he's tired of dealing with it, and I understand his frustration, because, you know, like I said, Ruth found this file that indicates this has been a little too, for going on six years.
Yeah, it's quite some time.
And this, this whole situation was created by the county's predecessor entitled Miss, Miss Morton. When she owned that building, she constructed the, she constructed that porch and the steps. And then, when she filed bankruptcy, what ended up happening was we, um, Endless Wall Properties ended up acquiring ownership of that property. At one time, Miss Morton owned everything back there, so it didn't ma, it didn't matter that the porch and the steps were where they were positioned, because it was, it was on a different parcel that she also owned.
Okay.
But then what ended up happening was this, um, Endless Wall Properties bought the parcel behind the detective bureau. But then what ended up happening was this, um, Endless Wall Properties bought the parcel behind the detective bureau, Bank, County National Bank, foreclosed on what is now the detective bureau and acquired ownership through a foreclosure. That's how we ended. So basically, you ended up with, instead of the same person owning either side of the property line, you've got different owners. And that's how we ended up where we are now.
All right. Well, we'll work on that just a little bit. Uh, thank you for the information. I just have it right here until the sheriff shows up.
This is Ruth's file, so I'm just going to set it up here so that when you're finished with the survey, then it's to go back and.
All right, thank you. Uh, go ahead to number four or number five.
So this is a quote, um, for seventy-eight hundred dollars from Casto Technical. So they're replacing the boiler in the sheriff's department. And he said the valves and the pump or something, I have no idea.
Two pumps.
Right. So all that stuff is old as well. And in all reality, if you're replacing the boiler, that stuff needs to be replaced too because it's part of the issue that keeps going out. But it does require you signing a contract and agreeing to the quote.
Well, it's something that needs to happen. Have we checked with anybody else to see if we can get it for less?
Aren't they the ones doing the work? Yeah, I mean, why would we do that? They are doing the work and they actually have the service contract on there.
Yeah.
I, I, I may as well approve it. I think we have to do it.
A second. Here we have the motion in second on approving the, uh, scope of work for the boiler pump and valve replacement at the sheriff's office. All those in favor?
And then the next one is just an order naming City National Bank as a depository if that county funds.
What are we going to put there? Is it, I, I see there's a limit, there's a financial limit on how much we can deposit there.
Why do we even have?
I don't know. That's why I was wondering. I don't know if one of the grant accounts was there once.
Maybe because like our, most of our bank accounts and everything were affected by National Bank at my notes. So I guess, is it just the option?
I think so.
Because I never seen.
Yeah, because when we sent all them out. They can come back. They can come back anytime they want. And I think that.
And they have a foot sprain. All right. You know, it's just weird to me. I don't know what that's about.
For the account of Highland Towers LLC, who's Highland Towers?
It must be one of these towers, like nine-one-one related.
I know where Highland is. There is a tower up there.
We can ask Anna what's actually there.
Can we?
Yeah, there, there's a tower up there. I know, I know the tower, we were talking about, but I mean, is it, is it, uh, do we get money off of it?
No, this is just a letter of credit for up to a hundred grand.
It's really not a letter of credit. It's saying that they're a certified depository for county money and that they'll guarantee it up to. We have to have those if we deposit funds with the bank.
But why is it on the back?
The back is the copy of the order. What's on the back? That's just a copy of the order.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah.
A letter of credit, a letter of credit. To me, I, I've not let her credit before. It's when you, you get a fifty thousand dollar letter of credit and you draw off credit and you pay payments on it and pay it back as you want it. So.
Any interest?
I don't know who Highland's cellular tower is.
I was asking Anna if we could.
I mean.
No, she, she said we don't have any money there.
Why would they send this stuff?
Can we just, can, can you guys look into it? And if, if we need to do something on it, just let's put it back on your exhibits for the first.
Most of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, do we even have to move to postpone because we, well, we can just, I mean, that we postponed the, um, item six to, um, the agenda on the first, um, to see whether we even need to address it.
Okay, we have a motion in second to postpone number six till the first. All those in favor?
Aye. So in that matter with the rail trial, there was an agreement that they sent us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think it's something we already agreed to. It's basically Greenbrow County was, uh, using different funding than they initially wanted to. And they sent the agreement to sign.
That was already signed.
No, we have threat to sign like the original.
Oh, we, I think we agreed. We had to just have to sign it.
We just need to sign it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we already approved.
Yeah, I have a motion. Approve him signing it, just so I feel better.
Okay. A motion for President Remer to sign it.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in second for me to sign it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sometimes we're like stooges up here.
We're getting tired. That's because some of us didn't have breakfast at home.
I'm sorry.
I know, he starts.
I know, he eats in front of it. He owns a restaurant.
We'll bring a big old Jethro bowl up here. My food, y'all.
You'll Jethro bowl.
And no plates, nothing, just forks, that's it.
Right.
Dig in.
So this next thing is a contract with Vinco to park for a pool table and a jukebox.
What's this about?
I mean, they should just give it to us and, and take money off of it split like they usually do.
My thing is, and I asked Anthony, I don't know what.
I mean, they're wanting to lease a pool, out of what budget? I mean, this is like kind of.
It's out of park.
Out of park budget. So Wayne has found money in his budget.
The way, the way I read this.
Yeah, the way I read is different.
It doesn't cost us anything.
They have to pay to use it.
They have to pay to use it.
To two percent of money.
A for, a percentage of the money, um, goes to the vendor, part of it goes to us, same thing with the jukebox, uh, basically pool table and jukebox. Same deal. Sorry, what I'm seeing here is split fifty-fifty.
But we have to insure it.
Yes.
Okay, well, let's go back to this one thing, the second since, uh, the sheriff's here. Will you come up here for a second, please? We're still fighting with your detective bureau and the, uh, property owner.
On behalf of, Tom Riss is upset about the porch and steps being on his property. So he's trying to resolve it.
And the porch. Now, if I remember when we did that little tour over there, this was the only way out of there in case there was a fire.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it sounds like, Anthony, then we need to negotiate whether Mike leases that parking or not. We need to negotiate their ability to exit in an emergency.
Yeah.
And, and that's what the issues that you called on, when they came over there, the prosecutor's office wasn't in code and the ad didn't have a back porch on. And they said, it's nice all fixing this all up, but you've got to have two exits. If there's something happening in front of the fire and all that, it's going to be right at the back. I thought it was dissolved, but until Ruth told me a while back.
Well, let me ask you a question, Mike.
Is that an issue if it's an emergency?
Through here, is there any way you can put a door like you got here, right here?
But the step, the steps just still have to be there.
Yeah, well, the steps can be in the middle between here.
So the license is the only issue.
Right here. Is there anywhere?
Never mind, I'm confusing the steps and the license.
Is there anywhere through here that a door could be put for a back exit so they, because this is our property here. So it'd have to come here and the steps would go down this way. Yeah.
I don't know if that's.
That's the other one. We're talking in between.
Between the building? I'm not a carpenter. I don't know.
Well, it looks like.
I mean, the only thing I know in this room right here, that is our processing room for evidence and everything. I get, I mean, because over here, I mean, we could still.
How far does it go up?
There's a, there's a proper, there's the evidence room stuff, and then we have a little interview room, and then there's a hallway that starts there.
So I wonder how far you, before you can use it as a, as a secondary door. It's about ten foot. I wonder if you can contact, keep in mind that this right here is owned by the URA.
Yeah, I know.
I was wondering whether that was a right of way or a driveway or just, I, I, I wondered about that when I was looking at that.
It says right here. County Urban Renewal Fund.
With this parking lot, I, I think I told Allison about it, this parking lot back here, I lease it every year because the detectives had to have a base park.
Is it over here?
No, right behind the building. I lease that from him. And then I also lease this over here five spots for deputies and everybody to park in. I got five slots here and for all of them.
How big of an area here do you lease, Mike?
It's enough for what, three or four cars? It, I thought it'd be part of that property.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
I mean, I have, I'm leasing up from Tom Riss right there.
What's the identi, what, what identifies this lease that you have here? What, what, you've got something wrote out?
I got it. It's written up over there. I sign all, I paid out. I mean, I paid out a joke.
Are you sure that's where it is right here?
I'm one hundred percent sure.
Yeah, it's just right here. They go down the porch and.
They run in the car.
And then you can bring your special guest in that way and they're not identified.
I remember us talking about that, Matt. I'm just confused about it.
Well, and that's what I told Allison about. I mean, in his letter, he said if we want to lease the property underneath the porch, he said he would lease it to us for six hundred, like six hundred bucks a year. How much would it cost us to, to buy it all the way down through there?
He doesn't want to sell.
He doesn't want to sell it. So six hundred dollars a year could make this all go away.
No, I make.
I, I can tell you how much I paid. I can call when we're fast.
I don't see how much you pay on that. Here's this, Anthony, if you want to look at that.
His letter. It's number four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I can tell you how much I've paid for that parking lot, Tom. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's six, I mean.
Yeah, he said he would lease it at six hundred a year.
Anthony, yes, sir. Where's your, you said you have a.
It's not, I think we could, it's not sure. Somewhere in this.
So it's one of your areas.
But you definitely need that part.
Yeah. I don't understand why it was, or that other.
To make things more interesting, that space in between, that's the property that you are in. There was another space on the other shop.
Yeah, we've already identified that.
Yeah, this is the county commission's and then this little parcel here is the URA's. So, okay, well, still you can, if you come out, well, still this is, this is still a county property right here. Okay, so we can use it, if we can use this. Only thing I, I'm trying to figure out is if we have to go with this, put an exit here as long as they consider, consider this a valid exit, as a back exit, two exits.
I don't think so, really. Because you've got a room that breaks off over here.
His is, his is like this.
Two rooms here.
He's got his right here. Anthony does.
Well, I noticed there's actually a verzzing door between my office and Tyler's. Didn't used to be there. And I'm guessing that was part of the, because, Lord knows, I wouldn't be able to walk out in the hallway.
Yeah, I know. I've been there.
I know. Over at Beverly, when we had, it was, it was considered a back door.
There's a door.
When you went in here, the back door is considered right here. All this other was not.
Yeah, because it wasn't there.
Now, that's, it's got to be the same code. And do here.
They had to, remember, they came and had to do that stuff back there because it wasn't within the plan.
Wasn't within fire code.
The, the task, their task force, well, we built that, but the drug task force bought all the wood and lumber for that back porch for us.
Yeah. I mean, we need to use all this no matter what.
I'm going to find out. She's going to look up my last check.
See, his parking lot is here, that he brings his special guests in. He wants the drug task force and other, other people.
Right.
So it's essential to have that. If we could lease this for six hundred dollars a year.
Or in his too.
Basically, just give us a way to walk through the parking lot together. I mean, I'm just curious what you're looking at that for and how they expect you to. Where do you, what, where do you go in when you park here? Getting in the back door here.
I can take you when you get done. I can take you and show you.
I mean, you don't, that's the reason, if you didn't have this back door, would you rent this?
Probably not. Well, no, wouldn't, wouldn't, they're not used to. They can park over here to the five lots. I can pull over here.
But it's important that you have that for the guests that you have coming.
Right. And that's what we try to stay away from because that's UCs and stuff like that.
All right, Allison, what are you saying about us? Messing with Ms. Taylor.
He kept making that reference in there.
Well, I don't want to say that.
No, I understand. He told me. He just told me. But you keep, keep making it sound like, you know, we have Russian spies coming in.
All right, just say CI.
All right, so.
He just kept saying the guests.
Regardless of, of, I mean, an extra survey is going to cost us an extra five to seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
At two thousand, right?
Eighty, I have eighty-five.
We pay two thousand for this.
Yeah, okay. Well, two grand. And then buying this is going to be five hundred, so it's twenty-five hundred.
I don't know what. I paid, he wanted five hun, I mean, what he, what he said was it's five hundred plus the nineteen hundred.
Or he would rent it to us for six hundred a year.
Oh, for that little bit.
And then I paid another two thousand for the other five spots.
Yeah, and what, how much is it for the?
Eight hundred dollars a year.
For back here?
Yeah. He charges me. And then I paid two thousand for the other five spots on the other side.
Man, that's, man.
Two thousand. Yeah. I can make, I mean, two thousand.
Adam, Steve, did you still have, he still?
He still did, no, he still has it.
He does.
I don't pay for it. I'm not paying, I'm not telling the neighbor now.
Not renewing this one?
No, I got to renew that one. My mom renewed that other one for everybody in the brother parks there and everything else, and I'm paying the bill.
Yeah.
I have my staff parks there. What are you doing there? I'm aware of parking.
You, you can put.
So we won't need a walkway over there.
Well, it's actually back here and I, I was mistaken about that. So they're, they're walking this way.
Okay. Walking from the, the place we're renting, from the building to the place that we're renting the parking.
Like I said, I'll show you when y'all get done. Come over, I can show it to you.
It's a nice building. You guys need to go look at it.
I used to pay for parking places down there.
Yeah, I was back here, Mike. Okay. When I was first elected, I just didn't know there was a problem.
So what do we need to do? I mean, I, I think in my opinion, we have to purchase the land because they have to have an emergency exit unless we want to, you know, you know, I think it's a smaller, more nominal thing to purchase the land than it would be to even knock down his wall and put in a new.
Yeah, but here's the question. Once they come out here, I guess this is our property. So he don't give us a problem with that. I guess they come up this way after the emergency exit.
Well, emergency exit, I think, I don't think he's going to be able to sue if somebody has to exit in emergency.
Well, they can get to the bottom step and jump from there to. I'm just, I just questioned.
Then we have all that.
When all this started, when all this started, we was going to come straight up because we, I was going to rent that spot, meaning the parking spot back there. Well, at first, I didn't even rent it. They paid for themselves. I said, you ain't paying for yourselves. So I, so I started paying for it. But then we was told then that we could put it that way and there was not going to be no problem. He said, Mike, I'm happy with that. Do, y'all do what you need to.
It's because he's getting your rent. He wanted you.
Right. We got that right. So then that was fine. But that's why the porch was built the way it was built.
It's because you was renting this back here.
But he's been, but he's been trying to resolve since before then.
Long time ago, yeah.
Since before that. So I don't feel like, yeah, since, so, since two thousand. Since before that, so I don't feel like, yeah, since, so, since two thousand fifteen.
I thought the, I thought the porch was just built three, three or four years ago.
There was a, there was an older porch.
There was an older.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he, he's just trying to cross the Ts and dot the Is on it, and I, I do think we ought to go ahead and, and purchase that. The survey expense is what concerns me with an elected.
It's going to be two thousand bucks or more.
For a new, just to, to, to draw a little box around that spot.
Yeah, to draw a little box.
Well, then I want to see this happen. I'm, I'm gonna have to get some new training and change careers.
Who says other property? Over here, that big lot there.
He owns it.
He owns it too.
But apparently the URAs.
They have that one little.
How, how?
How did that happen?
I don't know. That was my question.
It went up for proposals similarly to the, the, uh, the detective bureau, and I cannot remember what's, there was some issue. The commission couldn't buy it, so they had the URA buy it.
I know. There wasn't enough room in here between the two buildings to put that porch on there.
I'm, I'm, Don, if you could tell me. I have no idea.
That was just, I think the cheapest for it would be to just buy the property.
I agree. And lease liability.
And how much did you want?
There's room for people to evacuate there. If you have people evacuating in that small space.
Let me call him. I bet he's gonna say I don't want to sell it.
Mm-mm.
He never will.
No, he won't. He won't forget it.
He wants to get rid of it all.
He wants this over there. I mean, his big complaint, and I, I think he's thought about the point, is he's tired of trying to get it resolved, and he's tired of the county not, not dealing with it. He's been dealing with this for six years, and he's done, and I, I understand. He, I remember him telling me he brought it when Linda Morton still had her office, and he said something to her about it. She tried to claim adverse possession. It's like you can't adverse the possession of property, because she owned, she owned both sides.
Yeah, he whoo-dooed it, and she didn't put it in the contract.
Right, he didn't whoo-doo it, or she filed bankruptcy. He bought it through bankruptcy.
So. Do you want to talk to him first?
I mean, here's the first letter that was sent.
Right. Right, I saw that.
If you guys come up with a plan of action, um, I can certainly start negotiating whether to talk with him.
Wait, aren't you gonna say how much he wants for it first?
Well, in his letter.
I thought it was five hundred bucks.
No, it was five hundred plus the nineteen hundred back rent.
That's the lease, right, the rent.
And then you, would you mind calling him while we address the future, um, last couple items, and then maybe we'll have an answer?
He says in here that he will sell it.
We'll probably answer.
Sell the land to the county for five hundred plus the grant due rent. So I took that to me, twenty four hundred.
You have a cell phone, don't you? I, I know I do. Why don't you just call him while we address these last couple things and see if he's ready to tell us what he wants for it?
Twenty four hundred would be two thousand for another survey, so why not just go and pay twenty four hundred dollars?
It might not be as much for the survey, since it was just modifying the original.
Well, you're not modifying by moving it.
I think y'all modify it for free.
What he's gonna do is, he gonna have a pin at one step.
Oh, did he?
At the other step.
Yes.
Pin up to the porch, pin over to the corner porch, pin over here, and pin over here, and then it goes, says two thousand dollars.
And the next thing is that pool table.
Yeah, I was just looking at it there. So does that mean what, that, I mean, do you have, do you think you have to notify the insurance that we have this in there and get?
It won't change anything.
You know, I've never had to have a, a contract, when we had pinball machines and everything, they just brought them in and. You know, today's different than what it was, so I mean, I don't know.
So this is just to protect the equipment, but if anybody injures themselves on the equipment, that's going to be their liability.
I don't have a problem whatever y'all want to deal with this.
Is Wayne, did he, is he not participating?
No, he, um, I think he didn't even realize you guys would have to approve it and sign it, so. Have specific questions?
I don't really have a problem with it. I mean, if Anthony's okay with the, the contract, then I'm okay with it.
He didn't appear to have any issues, so. We're asking whether he's okay with it when he comes back in. He's like, hi today.
Well, my question is, why are we doing it this time of year when we should have it when the pools opened up?
Yeah, there's not gonna bring anybody down there.
Yeah, there's not gonna be that many people in.
Well, the park does have clothes. I mean, people still rent the shelters. They're talking about trying to have a fall festival, but COVID is pressing.
What kind of jukebox? Like, where's he talking about putting this stuff?
Crime and cantina.
Cantina.
There's a cantina, and then there's another building where they have like the Santa Claus and stuff is in there.
Oh, that's the cafeteria. When's our next meeting? What date is it again?
Saturday first.
The next, the regular one is the fifteenth, but then we have this first.
Yeah, why did you want to come in and give us an update on DRC on the fifteenth? Okay. Y'all mind him coming in on the fifteenth?
No.
I'll be here anyway. I got, we get to start, first one, sir.
Looks like there's.
We need to, you know, we keep adding stuff to the very next meeting. We just need to start keeping a lot of spots open for the very next meeting, because you know we're gonna stuff, stuff on there. The meeting before, you know what I mean? Like, limit. That way, when we do what we've done today, because I know we've added three things to it, but I kept.
It looks like three machines on that bin code thing.
I've got Mr. Riss on camera.
Okay.
Hey, Tom, can you hear me? Okay, I've got you on speaker. Um, Mr. Riss says that he would be, he only wants to sell the area insofar as the detective bureau issue. The area under the porch, the area under the steps. Um, he said he would sell it to us for two thousand dollars. Um, we have to have a survey, and he said that he would, as far as, he said it was only like the last step on the prosecutor's office. He said he would basically give us permission to keep that there if we can get this wrapped up. Is that, is that essentially what we discussed?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Hey, Tom, it's Allison. Hope you're doing okay out there. It, is, are there any problems if they do have to evacuate in an emergency to evacuate to that property back there, whether or not the sheriff is renting it? I understand that we could discuss a license as far as his detectives crossing to their parking spots, but if that weren't in place, that's an emergency door, fire door for them.
I can't really hear what, whatever was going on.
Allison's basically saying that, um, if you and I had also talked about giving the sheriff's department as part of their lease of the parking spaces, basically giving them a license to cross over the property, the endless wall, properties, land, to get to the parking spot.
Yeah, I think that's covered by the lease. That is, I mean, that is the spot they're.
Okay.
They're renting or whatever, so that should be covered. That's not a problem.
Okay, and we talked. And we talked about making that part of the lease. What Allison's saying is, is if the sheriff's department ever ceases to lease that property, is there going to be an issue if the sheriff's department detective bureau catches fire and people running out the back door and crossing over onto your land? I think is what she's asking.
To make it dr- dramatic.
Yeah, I would want two dollars per burden.
I didn't think it'd be an issue. I just wanted to bring it up, because that's what they, that's really their emergency door. We didn't want to have to relocate it. Okay, sweet.
So, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the sheriff's department leases property adjacent to the steps and the porch that, uh, they lease property from you to park vehicles in, and there is a lease in place that says they can cross over your property to the parking space?
Yeah, I actually think, I don't, it doesn't say that. They're just leasing that, that space and the steps and all of those. There's like three or six, I guess, double stack cars there. That's what they're leasing.
Okay.
Now cover all of them.
So, let's see, that's what I'm just confused about. That's part of, he, he's saying access from the porch and the stairs to the parking spot is covered by the lease of the parking spot. Okay.
Yeah, that's what he said. No, because the steps are still on his property. So, okay, thanks, Tom. Hope you're doing well out there.
Yeah, I'm thinking that there, that's, uh, that's over here.
You want me to get you a, a sales agreement until we can get the, um, survey completed?
I mean, we don't, we can wait until the survey's done. It's not, whatever it is, it is.
Well, I know. Well, I mean, I think the issue, based on our conversation when we talked last week or the week before, was the fact that you've been trying to get this resolved now for six years. Um, but I think, I think, I think at this point, with me involved and with our new commission, I think it's, I think it's gonna happen.
Yeah, we'll get it done, Tom.
Well, I'll send you a, I'll, I'll at least send you a confirmatory letter that outlines what we discussed here today, that as far as purchase price and what you're gonna sell and, and the other stuff.
Yeah, that's hot.
All right.
Yeah, I, I, for my state, for just wanting to, in like the next sixty to ninety days, then it's not a problem. I mean, that's always at the top. If, if, one, I'll walk out there, I'm like, whoa, we're just renting a porch here. Why is that there? Two is kind of like, to get, get, plug it down the road. Like, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of it.
Well, look. We'll do this. We're gonna communicate with the surveyor, and if he can't get to it within the next sixty to ninety days, I'll give you an update and let you know when he will be able to get to it. So I'll give you, I'll give you an update so you understand where we're at.
Okay.
All right, man.
Sounds good. You guys have a great fall. Um, this is good for sure.
All righty, take care.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Commissioners, I, I got a problem.
Okay.
I got a problem. The sheriff leases that property, and he's saying that they can come out the back door, walk across his property to the leased property that the sheriff leases off him, but he wants the county to buy the porch. It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, because the, because the county, well, because we are gonna, my concern is, is that we are gonna want to own that porch, because that lease might not always be in place.
No, I, I agree, but I, I just think it's time, I mean, I just, I don't know, I just, and I agree, I understand.
Yeah, he has this, I mean, had, had, you know.
I mean, I, I think you have to look at it like this, Tom. Essentially, the county is approaching of his property, and he just wants to get that issue resolved.
No, I agree.
I mean, I, I understand what your point is, but, I mean, at the end of the day, if he truly wanted it to be difficult, he could, he could file a lawsuit.
And frankly, if somebody were to fall on those stairs, he could be sued, because it's on his property.
Right.
So, so that's, that's a kind of, I mean, I understand why he wants to get it done.
You know, and if I guess, if I seen the timeline, I could, I could, in my mind, say the reason why more, but when the county leases the parking lot and he says you can cross over.
Right, you're saying you don't see a practical purpose in us owning the stairs, but if we weren't leasing the parking lot, we would still want to own the stairs.
Yeah, I, I, and I agree with that. I just, I just.
I know, it's not fair.
So this doesn't fall through the cracks. He's gonna communicate with the surveyor and ask him.
Yeah.
You guys need to vote on.
No, not for that amount of money. I mean, we can give Ruth guidance, but, we, I mean, she, under fifteen thousand dollars, she could spend it.
Okay, but as far as.
The contract.
As far as the agreement with Mr. Riss, I think you guys want.
We do have to vote on that, and we probably need to put it on that agenda.
No, I wasn't talking about the surveyor. I was talking about the, the decision to conduct the survey, purchase the property under the terms we discussed.
Can, can I mention one more thing? If, if the only thing we're doing is the back porch and the steps, can the steps go beyond so we can actually get to our other piece of property if we don't, if we, if, if, if we don't have a crossover when the sheriff's leasing that property, because.
What?
In other words, get around the corner. I think you know what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about. I mean, I would have to ask Mr. Riss. I mean, that, that wasn't what we discussed. I mean, he was clear just the property under the porch.
Okay.
Under the stairs.
Okay. So there's about three feet.
That little bit of access to get between the buildings.
To where that we're not on his property at all. It would be, it would be our property all the way around, walking up the alley.
Anthony, do you, do you think you even considered or talked about the selling that parking area that you were one step and all that, and affected to sell it to the county at all? Well, I mean, every, everything has its price, whether or not he's willing to sell. Actually, we gave everything we could talk with.
Yeah, I think as far as your question goes, Anthony, is that, you know, and, and we, it sounds like we have a couple more questions, but once we resolve what we're gonna do, then we put it on the agenda and sign the offer or whatever for, for the property or the purchase contract, don't you think?
Um, well, I mean, I.
Or you want us to go ahead and prove you to take, approve you to take action on it at this point, under those terms, because.
I think we have agreed at this point.
I think we do.
Just wanted to, I mean, I kind of felt like the commission needs to approve the agreements that we can go forward. But I'll certainly, uh, what I wanted to do, Tom, was pull up the survey. I've got a scanned copy of it. I was gonna pull up the survey and kind of draw it on, draw it on there, what you're talking about, and then send it an email and ask if it.
Just for us to have access to our property.
Sure, I understand. I understand exactly how.
If he says no, he says no, but, I mean, it'd be worth a try, just saying we have access all the way onto our property to, to, to avoid, if he ever rents that to anybody else, to avoid that, uh.
Sure.
I think at a minimum, we can authorize him to do what we've agreed, and then if we can get Tom to agree to more, then we can negotiate that.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem.
Okay, so I'm, I move that we authorize prosecutor to negotiate the agreement we discussed for the two thousand dollar, um, purchase of the area under the stairs at sheriff's department. Um, and, and go ahead and others, and the county administrator to take the action she needs to do to get the survey done.
One second. Got a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so if it's two thousand dollars for that little bit under the porch and the steps, how much would an acre cost?
Well, hey, eh, well, Anthony, if, um, and you should, just while you're asking, I'm asking what Mike asked, you know, if he's gonna come off any of that. If he's want to, we might want to consider it.
Um, well, I, I do have a question on this contract. It actually shows a jukebox, a claw machine, and a pool table.
What's it, the, what?
A claw machine.
A claw machine. Oh, what is gambling machines? Yeah.
You try to pick up stuff.
Yeah, I hate those. Kids love them, and I hate them.
This is only showing a pool table.
That's just the agenda. It's, it doesn't matter. That's ruthless. That probably doesn't matter which thing, but. Yeah, I didn't either. I, but I think they have a valid point, you know, timing wise, when should we enter into this? I mean, I think Wayne needs to come in here and answer that for us. Why we would need to want to enter into it sooner. Is it gonna, do we have to fill this out for them to, can we, you know, execute the contract and then deliver it on a certain date? I mean, I just don't know.
It's a year-to-year lease, no matter what, I believe, is or is.
It is a year-to-year.
But starting, like, starting when? I'm wondering, just if we fill it out, we could probably put a date when they would deliver that stuff, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, um.
So let's, uh. Postpone that one.
Postpone that item to what day?
I guess the fifteenth. Thank you, Anthony. Thanks for putting up with me.
I know what he means. I'll explain it to you later, Ruth and I, at length. Amy's too polite to offer to help, but.
I'm not quite sure what you're talking about, but I might, I might get in on it.
Tom said, thanks for, thanks for putting up with me, and Anthony said, I don't know what you're talking about, and I said, I do. And Ruth and I, and probably you could explain it to her.
Yes.
All right.
Court house, asking for the policy. Are we following?
The proposed policy.
We don't have a proposed policy.
Look at you hedging your bets. Look at you hedging your bets, as far as I'm concerned, the, the way it is should be the way it stays, things are not gonna change, whether it's new variants or, you know, there's, you have the same level of contagion among your unvaccinated and vaccinated.
One of the questions is, I, I think we just follow the CDC guidelines and we don't make up our own guidelines, period. So if the health department tells somebody to stay home, they stay home, if they tell them they can go to work wearing a mask.
Oh, is that what the agenda?
I mean, that's like a lot of it, because.
Well, as far as like how we handle the employee issues, I like what Judge Ewing had in his letter as far as the health department, if they tell you to stay home, you stay home, and we can grant that stuff, yeah.
It's, because everybody keeps asking, I'm like, what did the health department tell you to do, I'm not an officer, like, I'm gonna do what they tell me to do.
Right, but as far as like the courthouse policy, I, I do not think it's necessary for people to wear masks in here, I understand that the judge has decided in, you know, court, Supreme Court space, that that's the way they wanna do it, but, you know, that, that, those are his decisions to make as chief judge. And our decision is with regard to the rest of the courthouse, which is mostly just downstairs in the magistrate court building and here, I, you know, I don't think we need to have a mask policy.
I think magistrate court has gone to the masking too.
Oh, yeah, they have, well, they have to, because they're under him, they're the chief judge, yeah.
Yeah, so everything judicial has the masking.
Right, so it's basically the lowest, that's what I'm talking about, where the tax office and all that is, that part of the basement of the annex, and then this floor, except for in probation, of this courthouse, and any other county-owned facilities like the memorial building and nine-one-one center and all that stuff, but, DRC.
And then if people are all paid, they're simply, they're vacation, there is not paid leave.
Yeah, and if somebody has somebody particularly vulnerable that they're worried about in their office, then they need to do an accept, you know, come and talk to us about an exception to the policy, like, if you've got somebody going through chemotherapy or something and you want people to wear masks, and, you know, DRC or whatever, just for lack of a better.
Do what you feel, if you feel you need it, put it on.
Yeah, feel you need it, but I'm talking about like if somebody's in there who's in customer service and they're having people walking in, they, you know, they could ask and, and, and we could approve them having a mask policy while that vulnerable person is working in their office for their protection, but.
And plus, we have the Plexiglas backup, want to.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, I think we just seek guidance as far as leave and all that stuff is concerned, Ruth from the health department.
Yeah, before we go on future agendas, I gotta ask John something.
How did that come up about the county being responsible for the URA debt and then grants, where'd that even come from, I'm just curious?
With John Stump?
John was talking to me yesterday.
He mentioned it to you?
No, I mentioned that we, he, we were talking about the, the tax credit on, on the park, where the money stays there with it, and then I mentioned that we're gonna try to sell it.
The TIF, he's on.
Yeah, the TIF.
TIF, okay.
And he said, he said, well, is it gonna be industrial or residential, I said, I don't know, I said possibly more residential than industrial. And he said, well, there's a possibility you gotta pay back the grants, so in order for us to have a true picture, when it is sold.
But, but the county commission has nothing to do with that. And, and I think he even said that, I mean, the URA is the one responsible for all the grants and the loans and the process and everything, and I think that Michael Taylor's said that to us and separated us from that a few months ago, that's why I was curious.
Okay, but.
Come up, and he even said, right there, he said, well, I see one here, that the county commission didn't even sign on the note.
Okay, so let's say they need an extra fifteen thousand dollars to get out of it, so we can sell it.
Fifteen thousand?
Get out of what?
To pay off one of those, those, or one of those grants, can we give them the fifteen thousand dollars to do it?
As far as I'm concerned, they get nothing from us.
Okay, so.
That's, that's, I mean, you know, so they can sell it until somebody comes with a price, I think, this, I, I bet it was just a smokescreen they brought in here the other day, they're not gonna try to sell that thing, I think if, if they do try to sell.
Well, they're trying to get the land trust to get on board with stuff, and I don't, I don't like that idea at all.
Well, they tried to get us to commit to two, two point one million dollars in infrastructure, and then he had, give us a price on how much somebody will to buy for, said they're gonna sell it for, it's this, it's a big joke, and, and that's why I was curious if somebody asked Stump or you asked through somebody else.
No, I was just talking through him.
Okay, I was just curious.
You were just asking him about the, like, the TIF and, like, the implications of the TIF. Is that because he did the TIF for us or something, okay?
And I would like to have all of our bases covered in case we can.
Understand what we have to do. Well, we can also put Michael Taylor in touch with him and let him know that he did the original TIF and he can work that out if we get to the point where we need to do something about it. Vote to remove it?
Yeah.
Why do we have this thing from the FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission? Pipeline here, ma'am.
Next, same thing, they gave us about three months ago, said they're supposed to be a surveyors do something that every so, every so often with that, we read it, it was a big packet about a couple months.
Does Anthony have this, because he needs to look at it. We get it to him. This is something about giving us notice, I mean, basically, and there's a timeline on here, September thirteenth, so you should look at it soon, bring that to his attention if you would, but.
I think it should go to Eddie too.
Yeah, it's just like our ability to give input to whatever they're doing on the pipeline is gonna be, it's almost like a class action suit kinda thing, if you wanna file comments, you have, if you can't, don't ask for intervenor status, you're not gonna get it, if you don't get it by this time, then you opt out, basically, so, I just think he should look at it, and yeah, probably Eddie too.
Okay, on this next agenda, support letters needs to be put in under pledge and before exonerations.
Yeah, this is on the first, this isn't the fifty, this is our short meeting.
Oh.
It's our special meeting for the purpose of the comp plan.
Well, why aren't we revisiting something from Dave Perry when we're not supposed to do that until November?
Well, it's not getting on there.
No, I think we told him after October.
We did.
And he called the other day about it, and I told him he would be discussing it today.
Yeah, so.
We said nothing till after October.
Nothing till after October, yeah.
No means no, Mr. Perry.
And deeds for Meadow River Rail Trail.
That's already been taken care of.
Okay, and shooting range funding?
I said, that's the email that I sent you guys.
So I met with Rob down there and I told him to get some figures together.
Yeah, so I think September, that doesn't have to be taken care of then, so.
Yeah, I told him when he got the figures together to come back.
So on Ruth's exhibits, we did move, we moved number six. Okay. So really, this movie is about the comp plan, or this movie, this, this production is about the comp plan.
Yeah.
And that's really all that should be on here. Right?
And you said there were some other things that would be on there.
Things on her exhibits, but.
And I can put the, move in, that one changed order, move Allison.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll put that on that meeting, and we'll do that number six. I don't think there's.
All right, can we revisit the fif, okay, or fifteenth on the next page, okay.
I like to put Mike on there to give us an update on the, the RC, anything going on out there.
Okay, yeah, what time are we gonna do, are we gonna have that?
Nine thirty? You want that at nine thirty?
What time is good for you, Mike? You scheduled it on a meeting day, man. I asked him to invite us to the swearing in, so we could attend him.
We have Jenna on there for New River Gorge Development Authority update.
Yeah, she's on every meeting to do that.
Yeah.
So, the comp plan's done.
So, ten, ten thirty is good for you, Sheriff.
Ten o'clock's a public hearing.
Yeah, we'll pick you at ten thirty.
Ten thirty. Then we have John David Levin.
We need to let Anthony know too about the, should we invite anybody else on the update, or you wanna do it by yourself?
I'm gonna talk to Anthony after this, because I have a question for me, I'm not a bitch, I ran it down about the two other people from the point, by code being one of being master. One being head of MRS, I don't think it has two group types of issues, but I wanna make sure it's going right, so I have to only answer out, as soon as I do that, I'll let you know about the meeting also on that day, so.
Okay.
We wanna have a meeting before that too, so that's all we can.
That's a good idea. Anything else? I like the looks of this agenda, this is how I wanna model it.
That's what I'm thinking about, I've kept my mouth shut, I've kept my mouth shut for a long time.
You have behaved a little better than usual, that makes me feel like something bad is coming, yes. When the kids are quiet, what happens?
Mike, what about a dog catcher, or dog catchers?
I've been accepting applications or resumes, I've received, I think, thirteen, believe it or not.
That's pretty good.
They got to the twenty seventh to, to get them in, I had to pick them up, I made another day, they didn't see it, so the news has come and talked to me tomorrow, trying to get out more, so thirteen people so far. At some point, I talked to Ruth about this, and Allison had a little brief talk about it, at some point, either Michelle went to be in charge of them, or it's a part of that, or the state's, our need to share, that's fine too, either or, but we talked about the salaries and stuff, I did, we came up, we probably hired two, but it's what costs us the full money, that's why Russell was making, plus his overtime, get your vet, and we have somebody out here from eight o'clock in the morning to midnight, and then change it up a little bit, and then have people out here on weekends, you know, paparazzi all the time, so I believe you can sit down and talk with them, see how we wanna do this, and how we wanna, you know, how we're off the bat, because I know I can't hire two off the bat, because Russell's leaving, we have to pay him thirty days' leave, because it'll be money budget, stuff in that way too, and he had overtime and anything else, but he's done, he's already turned off, he's up there, he's done, he's not coming back, so.
When do you expect to make selections?
Ma'am, the twenty seventh of February, and I hope I notice, heck, it's about the twenty eighth, but they're wearing us out, we're putting dogs in our crib right now, we had another day, we got the truck and we had to go pick up some dogs and stuff, um, this is.
So we need to get an agenda item on there, one of the first.
We're gonna mail that around ourselves separately and, and.
I'll just let you know what you wanna do, and, and, you know, and what I was gonna do, Ruth and I talked about this, I was gonna convert applications, say, hey, look at them, you're with me, and you can call me, or whatever, or if y'all wanna take care of, y'all can have it, I mean, that's, that's what we had, should have gotten it on the agenda beforehand, we need to report for something, call air.
Let's put it on the first, just so we can, so we, just in case we need it as a place or take action, but, you know, frankly, at this point, and I'm, I, I know that you might fringe at this, but I wouldn't hate having Kathy involved in this, so they can't complain, you know, that something about somebody we have there, I mean, they can help us ask questions in an interview or whatever, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, because they work for you, but. Or from there, so, well, there's that.
Can we have a copy of them, them?
I'm, I'm gonna get them all, this group.
Will you forward them to, to us?
There's some with the experience in it, there's some not, no experience.
You go run backgrounds on them before you send them?
I'll do all that.
Okay.
Well, I won't do that until we get to the point, who we wanna, if we wanna hire two, and we're just gonna interview, that's the, what we're looking at, six people, then I'll run a background, and then I'm gonna do an offer, you know. And there's something out of state, I think they thought we, then, I forget what state, now, best, it's West Virginia, this isn't Arizona, and they go, crap, sorry about that, or wherever.
It's a fat county in another state.
There's a fat county in several states, North Carolina, Pennsylvania.
I've had them argue with me, that they're just supposed to be performing their wedding ceremony, I'm like, not in this courthouse.
I've had them argue with me that Fayetteville's Fayetteville, no matter what.
What, the biggest question I will have, again, if it comes stated with the sheriff or going to the commission, either side has to look at, one, you know, the start side twenty four five or twenty five thousand a year. Again, from Ruth and I looked at it, it was like seven, what was it, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars roughly?
Assuming they don't have.
If they don't have insurance, stuff like that. Yeah, it'd be a lot more, and they'd say.
But that's, you gotta do less than twenty hours, don't you, does it?
He talked about, she talked about, and if they are married and have kids, stuff like that.
Okay.
But, long story short, it's, it's hard to find anybody that, I mean, I was getting down the river, because I did twenty four five, and then, oh, wait, see what happens, you know. Russell's salary was twenty six, something or other, and then there was twenty thousand five hundred overtime that was in there all the time, well, we talked about this before, if there's overtime, hire two people, his salary could be done with, you know, if an emergency happens at three o'clock in the morning, they are caught out, you know, that that might happen, but still, that's something you need to look at.
Did Russell only work Monday through Friday?
No.
No.
He worked weekends too.
He worked all, get caught out all the time, then for this time, whatever. A schedule can be done with two people, it's not, you know, you can, they don't have to work at eight o'clock in the morning, they come out at ten to two, and two to ten, or whatever it is.
They can take terms being on call on the weekends.
You could hire two people, you know, my reservation being in with me, or the creation is, one truck, they drive themselves into work, they give them the county vehicle, they go out and do their job, they drop the county vehicle off, and they'll give, we just have that one truck.
Yeah.
They can share.
Well, and frankly, you know, if we find out and we might wanna get feedback on this, but it, you know, if the weekends are busier for picking up animals, we might, might wanna make their, you know, workdays, you know, Tuesday through Saturday and Sunday through, or whatever.
How do they call it, they call, they don't call nine-one-one center. Okay, so nine-one-one center will have a record, and the calls come in, and the average calls are. Yeah, I know, yeah, but it don't give a time, does it, on the nine-one-one, it don't give a time, the nine-one-one center would have to print out.
Yes, yes, they can tell you what time they call out.
We definitely need to gear the work schedule toward that.
I already looked at that too, and we could even go to ten hour shifts and split them up, do it that way, in more ways, there's, there's a whole different option, that's why I said, sit down and talk, and figure out what job I wanna do, wanna do, if we want.
Well, we can put it on, on the first, and we can go, we can discuss it in executive session or whatever we wanna do. Because they'll have all those resumes by then. Do you wanna just notice it as an executive session, just in case? We discuss hires?
I'll be fine, yeah.
I think, didn't Anthony say you just put an agenda item and then you.
Then you move to go into it, that's what I thought, sometimes we put it on there and sometimes we don't, so, okay. When is that House Seal Levine group coming, what time are they? Oh, yeah, Jenna said that, didn't she?
Why, why, why does it say ten o'clock? It's, it's nine to eleven.
Okay, somewhere I was looking at ten, ten o'clock, and I said, that's, that's.
Okay, so, so this needs to go at eleven fifteen.
It's the first, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the first, and it's at nine.
Okay, this ain't that, look at, I'm good. Sorry, I had my fit the wrong way.
Wait, where? I don't see it on mine.
It's at nine o'clock. For the first.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's, no, but, okay, did you hear me, Amy, like, eleven fifteen, okay, and that'll be that.
So is eleven fifteen good for you? Yeah, the first.
Well, we thought we'd get it on sooner for you, I know you're already gonna be in here on the fifteenth, but, so, but since, so you can get somebody in place and have it all flushed out. Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, that does everything for us, right?
Move adjourned.
Take it, done.
Probably, yeah.